I apologize, everybody. So, we're about ready to get started with the meeting. Protocols, and I have private messages. So, the group chat after last council meeting, there was some discussion from council members and some concerns about the chat. I'm opening up the chat for messages directly to the organizer, which is myself, Mayor of the city. So, if anybody would like to have the opportunity to speak during public comments, please message me and just put your name and chat. But what we will do now, to get us officially started, is ask everybody to rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge to agents in the flag of the United States of America, and through republic, liberty, justice, and the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Officially calling the meeting to order. Bruce Peitler? Yeah, could we maybe have a moment of reflection in honor of John Lewis before we get started? I think that is very appropriate. Ask everybody, we're going to observe a moment of silence in honor of the passing of John Lewis. Civil rights advocates and individuals who represent his people at the national level will be missed by many. I would also like to ask council to change the agenda officially. Let's make number one, we have Fred here, who is in charge of communications at City Portland, and when we get to it, we've got a couple things to cover before then, but if meets with council approval, like to recognize and give Fred here some opportunity to speak on City Portland's preparation for the upcoming fall semester, the topic that definitely has gathered some interest within the community and beyond. Boing around and try to make sure council members are taken off of mute. You can mute yourselves again if you want to. Just a roll call, please. Say your name when I call your word. Word one.
Everett.
Two.
Everett.
Three. Yes. Four. Five.
Everett.
Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. All right. John Bennett is excused to be good speaker earlier today. We have the opportunity for us to public comment. I have one person who has messaged interested in comments before, Mecca Nagel. I appreciate everyone's patience.
Thank you. Um...
There we go.
Well, thank you, Mia. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to... And I would like to honor John Lewis, who gave us many amazing, I mean, standard for what I call Ubuntu, the finest. So, he says, "Release the need to hate, to harbor division, and to entice me of revenge. Release all dependence, hold only love, only peace in your heart, knowing that the battle of good to overcome evil is already won. To confrontation, watch me, but when it is your time, don't be afraid to stand up, speak up, and speak out against injustice." So far, John Lewis. And I would like to take up, you know, my comments in that spirit of sharing love and also not being afraid to stand up for what is my truth. As you know, we had a rally on Saturday, which was reported in the Portland Standard, and the organizers, which I was one, had no say and control over what speakers may say. The speakers shared with us a variety of experience with policing, and they spoke their truth. Sheriff Hounds was acknowledged in the recent article about the rally and then responded to the rally and all demands. He acknowledged that racism exists in the police force and the direct contravention is counterpart and rule, which I think was an important statement. What follows, I wanted to point it with Professor Tony Gaskins, an economist, who's a former detective turned criminal justice professor of University of Pittsburgh. He says, "The police," in his estimation, "has come in three categories, specifically the three Rs. One third is the righteous ones, one another third is the riddled, and the last third is the rotten." In the news, we see police units, police officers in solidarity with colleagues who are committing acts in the last third. So, we have seen fifty police officers resign from elite military squad regimes after the disciplining of two cops who had pushed an elderly man to the ground, leaving him bleeding from his head. And then there's an older case with Officer Darius Horn. She intervened in a chokehold and lost her job in tension over her timed action. Fifteen years later, she's still not reinstated. In my estimation, she's one of the righteous ones. She was even punched in the face by the colleague whose accident she stopped, needing dental work and other physical work and suffering from PTSD. Now, in her honor, the need for Darius' law is very clear to us, that we need to have laws to protect the right of the righteous police to stay on the force without deterioration and physical assault from their peers or supervisors. So, this law is called the duty to intervene, as the cause of all officers to protect citizens from unnecessary assaults of force. Right? So, now, I want to focus really more on the day-to-day interactions with the public that don't rise to the level of physical abuse. So, in the spirit of John Lewis, again, I propose a different...
Mecca, we're reaching three minutes, and basically, at the beginning, we asked the comments directed to three council on topics that they can directly...
Right. Right. If I may just take another thirty seconds? Thank you. I propose a different kind of policing model for Portland, compassionate policing with an eye on customer service. Yeah? So, you know, we could start with exchanging military hardware for body checks, and we could engage in public participatory budgeting and really looking at police budgets specifically. And, you know, we have a price for accountability and transparency. If there are police ceremonies in the future, they should be openly public and champion prices for de-escalation and for settling disputes without throwing weapons. With a kind of policing, of course, the baseline would be frowned upon, and I compare to other professionals in ethical standards. If teachers are retained and get tenured, it's because of the student interaction, yeah? And students get to evaluate professors. Professors who sexually harass, even when they're tenured, they get fired, they lose their right to pension, et cetera, right? And if we had this model of customer service, I think racial profiling of motorists would disappear because a police officer would be subject pirating of the public. For instance, did I behave courteously, they want to fire. Did I stop the motorists for car thefts, or no, et cetera, right? So, you know, if we retain our idea of, you know, the public has a right to know, the public has a right to be treated with respect, I think we could win the hearts and minds of folk, and rallies would be of the least at that time. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Mecca. And council, I'm experimenting here. I'm trying to make sure that we are not having some random noises when people climb in, when people are joining the meeting. But I'm going to work on unmuting and giving you the opportunity to say, "Ward, report." Is that McCarthy? Are you ready?
Yes. It's been very quiet in the first ward.
Very good. Second ward.
It's been very quiet in the second ward. Birds bong, crickets down to summer, a chick singing, and some luddies. Schools are grappling, they're reopening. I'm a teacher, I'm grappling with reopening. And so, I urge all parents of schoolchildren to go to their district's website and check in on what's happening and what your options are. I attended a Zoom meeting and in the last panelists from five different college cities around the United States discussed the fiscal impact of COVID-19, and it was very interesting. And the biggest takeaway I had is that they could bring light to the federal government and give you a single package to send money registered to cities, municipalities, towns, so that they can decide how to use it. I also want my fellow councilmen to know, I've been working on a letter in support of the police. We discussed this weeks ago. I wrote in a couple of verses, I think I set me out, and I sent it to you, that if you are happy with the letter and you'd like to sign on, we'll take it to the Portland Standard and the Portland Voice. Yes. I think our police department is very open and willing to comply with the governor's command if they divide their community. I talked to different chiefs in our force, and I'm really pleased with their response, especially from leadership. And so, we support them, we're moving forward, and that's the message of the letter, actually.
Very good. Third ward, Bruce. Oh, hang on. There you go.
That's a new one, man. Quite a way to cut me up before we get started on that one. First, I was going to start by wishing President Obama Happy Birthday today, and I won't be into that whole lot, but I hope he had a great day, because he deserves it. Secondly, a lot of times, TCW, especially Nick, for some reason, we had a heck of a time just in a streetlight hooked up over on Broadway, and the folks over there were very patient, and Nick stayed on, and he stayed on, and he stayed on, and he finally convinced the folks responsible for hooking that up that we needed to get it done, and he did. And so, thank you, Nick. I know you spent a lot of time on that. You shouldn't have had to. It shouldn't have worked that way, but anyhow, sometimes, so go as you want. As far as the county concerned, which my ward is a big part of, I was fortunate enough to take part in a conference call with various municipal areas and other council people around the state of Denny, just like our county. I won't go too far down my road, because I know you have brought it up on the agenda here, number one. But I do want to let people know that the county is staggering the arrival of students this year, and just a little, you know, heads up. It's going to start August 22nd, so August 27th, 23rd, 24th, the freshmen will be arriving, so if you want to... Just letting people know ahead of time, so nobody gets caught by surprise, and we have essentially, you know, a week worth of students coming in, a little bit at a time, and people want to plan their trips to stroll around that. I just wanted to be aware of it. And then there's a pause on the 25th, and then the 26th and 27th transfers students are coming in, and then the 28th, 29th, are the rest of students who are coming back to the campus. So, you can go to Portland.edu, Portland.edu, www.Corland.edu, and you can find all this information, but I just wanted to give people a heads up on that. And lastly, before I go, I wasn't able to attend the rally that happened Saturday, unfortunately, I was able to, excuse me, walk, park it on YouTube, YouTube, I think it's called, uh, Portland Voice. And towards the end, an individual said something that was so outlandish that I really, I really want to go on reference saying that there's no way on earth I agree with anything she said, in my opinion, that for some people look for audiences, and some people look for solutions, and in my opinion, that one, and this was strictly looking for an audience. And I'm not a part of it, but I am going to continue working with folks, interested groups, as we continue making our community a welcoming and equitable place for everybody. And that's, I'll let it go at that, but that, I'm, I'm, I report the work for folks. I couldn't disagree more from what I'm able to say, so that's my report.
Thank you. Moving on to the fifth ward, Jackie. Uh, hang on. There you go.
Okay, ready. I was over in both departments about a week and a half ago, and spoke to two different family groups. And both family groups wanted to say thank you very, very much for opening the park. They've been there and using the facilities for their young children, and it was a very appreciated that the council took that step early this summer. I had a couple of issues on different levels of history that were, we're trying to basically figure out. I had a constituent call and complaining about a business in my ward that was not complying with that. I called the hotline number, and when I drove by a week later, it seemed like anyone's hearing that. So, thank you, everyone, for working hard at our events, at Givers. And another conversation I had with the mayor near my street, she was just very, very thankful and pleased and joyous that the council and the mayor have taken a stand with Black Lives Matters and for the patients. She also said, you know, she supports all of the groups, but this is important, and she was thrilled that we were forward-thinking in the fact of Black Lives Matters. And I get...
Thank you, Jackie. Fifth ward, very busy in Ward 6. Issue on Charles Street was resolved with a raccoon, the family has moved on. Apparently, there had been several woodchucks that were trapped, however, in that same garage, and Paul Sandy helping with that. Thank you, Paul. Bill, we need to move to a different area. There was another issue Brian and I got with on Charles Street, with some tenants leaving garbage by St. Mary's. Thanks, Brian, for helping out with that while I was on the station. They're very happy with the issue down there now. Hopefully, they'll get resolved with the tenants. North Street, several weeks ago, I don't know if anybody heard about this, but there was a two-pit wall, two pit bulls attacked three people down there. Pretty vicious attack. I saw it on video. A young child was bit, one girl was sent to upstate. She had some skin taken off of her, she had surgery. I've been working with the landlord a little bit, trying to get him to, so he can do these kind of stuff. It's a pretty dangerous situation. I don't want more pit bulls to come into that house. Hopefully, we can get that resolved. It's a serious situation, like I said, the video looks pretty horrific that I saw. I also watched the video this weekend, like Bruce did, and I'm pretty upset at what I saw, with the statement they made by this one individual. I like to say that thirty-two years, thirty-three years I've been working with law enforcement officers, I've never known a bad time. Every officer that goes out there saves the community with pride and dignity. My Portland Police Department is a great department. We don't do this for the money, we don't do this for accolades, we go out there to save the public, and we think there's certain things we do, like all day with a raccoon. There's certain things we do that save the public. We wouldn't be doing this if we didn't enjoy it. So, I'm very happy with what we do at the Portland Police Department. It probably serves the Portland Police Department, and I'm very happy that I choose that, you know, in the future that we hire good officers, and I don't really, I condone that person stabbing the person. I don't appreciate what she said. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Seventh ward.
Other than the parking stuff on, oh, yeah, whatever street that is. Other than, I saw a plant, I wish we were going to drive that further down, on Hubbard Street, that is. Yep.
Very good. Eighth ward, Tom Michael.
I'm hoping that you guys didn't release all woodchucks in the area, because it's got a grass come over this way. The, I do want to make a statement regarding the fall on Mr. Sands the other night. It was totally uncalled for, and I wish Mr. Sands and his family well, and understand that the city has a critical interest now, and I'm hoping that we're going to sue this to the nth degree of the law, to see if this court is prosecuted. This is totally uncalled for. Regarding the mayor's email, regarding the August 2nd rally in the park there, the email was really well put together, and I, well, what do you say, one honest is that? There are certain individuals that have no right to be in this community, if they can't say something good about the people that represent law enforcement. I want to thank Nick, getting the tree removed over on Randall Street. I'm sure the resident is very happy now. We had some homeless issues behind the chairman of the office. I haven't heard any more regarding those at this point. I'm hoping that this is going to resolve. We had to get some people involved, and they certainly come straight on there. Another concern was the resentment that people are not wearing masks in public parks. And this came up regarding a pickup game that was in Randall Park last Wednesday. The individual had taken some pictures regarding talk of distancing, you know, the mayor and John Biggerty, and he said that, you know, people aren't required to wear masks because of the situation. It's totally just a theory of them. The next game I plan on being out there possibly was coming from the police department, you know, a little issue ticket, because people are not wearing masks, that should be. We also, well, I'm just going to leave it at that, and that's also the eighth ward. Thank you.
Very good. I, let's see, I have a prepared statement that I put together, and I think Tom, you were alluding to this, so I'm going to speak to some of the conversations we're having in our community, in particular, the ongoing discussions that take place between many of us regarding Black Lives Matters and law enforcement. And I see these as two separate discussions, that these are not in opposition to one another, and they should not be made out to be a choice between one or the other. We can support both. And I said just weeks ago, council and myself are listening to community members, and we have an understanding that not everyone is treated the same. We're committed to listening to, working with, all of our constituents, and we have been, and we're going to continue to represent all of our people. In the city, for those of you who may be unaware, the police department is structured so that the police chief officially reports to the mayor, council has the final say in the budget, and this is true for all of the city departments. If there are any failings in city service, if it is not corrected or improved, that's a failure of city government. And I know that city council members take their responsibility seriously, and I certainly take that responsibility seriously as well. We are elected to lead and to serve, and our employees, including police, are all held to a high standard. And I can unequivocally say that I am proud of our employees, and yes, it does include law enforcement. They do great work, they care, they go above and beyond call of duty, and in today's politically charged climate, they get it. They understand the importance of impartiality. Our officers do not take sides. They are a consummate profession that should strive to keep our residents, every time they put on the uniform, try to keep them safe, and even in the city. And we should expect the same from all of law enforcement. There are people, and like any of us, who make mistakes, and that's part of being human, and it is not a failing. Many of our officers grew up either in the city of Portland or nearby, and this is why they care so deeply for our community and for our neighbors. I've met and I've gotten to know many of our officers personally and just need to manage that. So, it's easy for me to say, "She has many great tops." It's the truth, and the fact that they're ingrained into our community means many people also feel the same way, and we want everyone to feel that way, and that's why we continue to listen to everybody in our community. But over the last couple of weeks, the narrative publicly and not just locally has been changing, and the statements that are being made, and some locally that I don't agree with, and there are plenty of examples on the national and regional level. So, this past weekend, when you heard from some council members, there are some controversial statements, and some that I would say are not fast addressed. And that was made by some visitors on Saturday. However, on the other side, North of here, the sheriff's department flew a political flag on a Henry boat during a political rally, which was a clear violation of impartiality and governmental standards. Again, we're all humans and sometimes make mistakes. But our expectations at this time needs to be consistent, and we need to de-escalate the tension that is drawn. City leadership is going to continue to have conversations with affected parties and continue to work for solutions that are in the best interest of our entire community. So, Saturday, courthouse pub, I watched an officer seated on a bench maintaining the peace. I got a gentleman who walked up, sat on the bench, put feet on the floor, and they talked. And I don't know what they discussed, but it looked like a very amicable conversation at that time. I thought about how great it was for my daughter to see that people can protest what are concerned, but still sit down and talk with somebody who they may have concerns with. I say my daughter, but in reality, it was a role model for all of us. I ask community members, I'm asking everybody to do this, de-escalate some of the tension that is occurring in our community. This may mean not reacting, when somebody pulls a sign and wants something you may disagree with. Instead, have a conversation, listen to each other, explain your perspective in here there, and afterwards, respect each other, and your American right to have differing opinions. We can support people of color, we can support law enforcement. City police department shows that every day. So, we need to continue to have rational conversations, and similar to baseball teams, keep your eye on the ball as these conversations happen nationally, as they happen regionally. My focus, council's focus, what is happening here in the city of Portland, and we're going to pay attention to our constituents, we're going to do it in the best interest of everybody locally, and we're going to be just like Yankees, we're eight and one, right? Couple of bits of news that, some positive things, wanted to share. Jackie made the statement, and I agree this weekend, going out with my daughter, playing at the splash pad, playing at the playground, great opportunities for kids to be out and about, especially on one day. We have had some complaints in terms of, and I think Tom was the one that mentioned this, social distancing guidelines for youth activities, and yes, there are some kids playing Little League, and yes, there are some adults, I believe, doing some pickup softball. We've received complaints on both, and it's kind of easy for me to check, because I actually have a nephew relative doing the Little League, and with the adult softball, the one day, right after we sent, we communicated with some people, John McMartin, and the next day, when I thought there might be some people playing, I went down and looked at Dexter Park, took a look...
You guys in the relief of wood cuts in the area? Because we got a grass come over this way. The, uh, I do want to make a, uh, statement regarding the, uh, the call on, uh, Mr. Sands the other night, uh, it was totally uncalled for and I wish, uh, Mr. Sands and his family well and, uh, understand that the state has a strict of interest now and I'm hoping that that we're gonna sue this to the nth, nth degree of the law, uh, to see if this is prosecuted. Uh, this is totally uncalled for. Uh, and regarding the, uh, the mayor's, uh, email, uh, regarding the August, uh, second, uh, really in the part there, uh, uh, your email is very well put together and I, uh, I, well, what do you say one hundredth fact? Uh, there are certain individuals that, uh, have no right to be in this community, uh, if they can't say something good about the, the people that, uh, represent, uh, law enforcement. I want to thank, uh, Nick, uh, probably getting the tree removed, uh, over on, uh, Randall Street, uh, I'm sure the resident is very happy now. Uh, we had some homeless issues, uh, uh, behind, uh, my roof, uh, I haven't heard any more regarding, uh, uh, both at this point, I'm hoping that, uh, this is going to resolve, uh, we had to get some people involved and, uh, they certainly come straight on there. Uh, another concern was, uh, the resentment that, uh, people are not wearing masks in, in, in public parks and, uh, this came up, uh, regarding a pickup game that was, uh, in Randall Park, uh, uh, last Wednesday, uh, the, the individual had taken some pictures regarding talk of just something wrong with the mayor and, uh, John Biggert said that, uh, you know, people aren't required to wear masks because of, uh, the situation, uh, it's totally just a theory of them, uh, uh, the next game I plan on being out there, uh, possibly was, uh, coming from the police department, you know, a little issue ticket because, uh, people are not wearing masks, uh, that should be. We also, uh, well, I'm just gonna leave it at that and, uh, that's all for today's work, thank you.
Very good. I, uh, let's see, I, I have a prepared statement that I put together and I think Tom you were leading for this, so I'm gonna speak to some of the conversations we're having in our community, uh, in particular the ongoing discussions that take place between many of us regarding Black Lives Matter and law enforcement and I see these as two separate discussions, that these are not in opposition to one another and they should not be made out to be a choice between one or the other, we can support both and I said just weeks ago, council and myself are listening to community members and we have an understanding that not everyone is treated the same. We're committed to listening to, working with all of our constituents and we have been and we're going to continue to represent all of our people. In the city, for those who may be unaware, the police department is structured so that the police chief officially reports to the mayor, council has the final say in the budget and this is true for all the city departments, but there are any failings in city service if it is not corrected or improved, that's a failure of city government and I know that city council members take their responsibility seriously and I certainly take that responsibility seriously as well. We are elected to lead and to serve and our employees, including police, are all held to a high standard and I can unequivocally say that I am proud of our employees and yes, it does include law enforcement, they do great work, they care, they go above and beyond call of duty and in today's politically charged climate, they get it, they understand the importance of impartiality, our officers do not take sides, they are consummate professionals who strive to keep our residents every time they put on the uniform, try to keep them safe and even in the city and we should expect the same from all of law enforcement. There are people and like any of us, they make mistakes and that's part of being human and it is not a failing. Many of our officers grew up either in the city of Portland or nearby and this is why they care so deeply for our community and for our neighbors. I've met and I've gotten to know many of our officers personally and just the command staff, so it's easy for me to say, we have many great tops, it's the truth and the fact that they're ingrained into our community means many people also feel the same way and we want everyone to feel that way and that's why we continue to listen to everybody in our community. But over the last couple of weeks, the narrative publicly and not just locally has been changing and the statements that are being made and some locally that I don't agree with and there are plenty of examples on the national and regional level. So the past weekend when you heard from some council members, there are some controversial statements and some that I would say are not fast addressed and that was made by some visitors on Saturday. However, on the other side, North of here, the sheriff's department flew a political flag on a angry boat during a political rally, which was a clear violation of impartiality and governmental standards. Again, we're all humans and sometimes make mistakes, but our expectations at this time needs to be consistent, we need to de-escalate the tension that is drawn. City leadership is going to continue to have conversations with affected parties and continue to work for solutions that are in the best interest of our entire community. For Saturday, courthouse pub, I watched an officer seated on a bench maintaining the peace, I got a gentleman who walked up, sat on the bench, put a few little flags and they talked and I don't know what they discussed, but it looked like a very amicable conversation at that time. I thought about how great it was for my daughter to see that people can protest what are concerned but still sit down and talk with somebody who they may have concerns with. I say my daughter, but in reality, it will roll out for all of us. I ask community members, I'm asking everybody to do this, de-escalate some of the tension that is occurring in our community. This may mean not reacting, when somebody posts a sign and wants something you may disagree with, instead have a conversation, listen to each other, explain your perspective in here there and afterwards respect each other and your American right to have differing opinions. We can support people of color, we can support law enforcement, city police department shows that every day. So we need to continue to have rational conversations and similar to baseball teams, please keep your eye on the ball as these conversations happen nationally as they happen regionally, my focus, council's focus, what is happening here in the city of Portland and we're gonna pay attention to our constituents, we're going to do it in the best interest of everybody locally and we're gonna be just like Yankees, we're eight and one ready. Couple of bits of news that, some positive things, wanted to share, uh, Jackie made the statement and I agree this weekend, uh, going out with my daughter, playing at the class pad, playing at the playground, great opportunities for kids to be out and about, especially on one day. We have had some complaints in terms of, and I think Tom was the one that mentioned this, social distancing guidelines for youth activities and yes, there are some kids playing Little League and yes, there are some adults I believe doing some pickup softball, uh, we've received complaints on both and it's kind of easy for me to check because I actually have a nephew relative doing the Little League and with the adult softball the one day, uh, right after we sent, we communicated with some people, Tom is learning and the next day when I thought there might be some people playing, I went down and looked at Dexter Park, uh, took a look over at Randall Park and there were some games going on and everybody was behaving appropriately. So messages when they are sent are being received and it is important, a caseload is low in Portland County and we need everybody to continue to do what they've been doing to make sure that we're being safe and with some of the changes that are happening, uh, Portfest, yes, you are a purveyor of fine music and good neighbors, Portfest has become an annual event and it is a lot of fun. Uh, however, I believe it's scheduled for August sixteenth, not having a live gathering, not having live band, but on WXHC from three to five, they are having, uh, the concert essentially live streamed, the idea is to get people on your portico, with your radios, all listening to the same show at the same time via the radio. So Portfest is an event that's taking place down on Van Jusen Street and the spirit of social distancing, the organizers are asking for people who are supporters to tune in and listen on the radio and they can share further information as questions become available. That concludes the mayor's report, moving on to approval of minutes from a July twenty-first meeting, motion to consider filing minutes as is, Katie Stillman, do I have a site? Jackie Chapman discussing anything to revise regarding the minutes, hearing none, all those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say hi, please say hi and wave.
Hi.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? None. So I asked for a, uh, change in terms of the agenda, I'm gonna decide to unmute Mr. Pierce, um, there's been several conversations taking place between the city and other community leaders with City Portland and Fred Pierce is gracing us, uh, to discuss a little bit about the plans that City Portland has. Fred, welcome and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you and I want to thank everybody, uh, on this call for, for giving me an opportunity to talk about what City Portland is doing and share some of the, the work that we have been doing and that, uh, we hope will keep our, our community and our greater community, our neighbor's safe. And, uh, we've been so focused on trying to communicate our plans with our students, with our faculty and staff with City that, I apologize, we haven't been, uh, as proactive about communicating with the larger community and I'm hoping that that will change with tonight. Um, we, we know it's important, um, to work in a partnership with you, we've had, as Brian had said, there have been ongoing meetings and we want them to continue because we want, we don't want to open up and then have to shut down and to have something terrible happen. We want to go the whole径途 and we want our neighbors to be safe here in Portland and we know that we've got to work together more to do. What I would encourage everybody to do is, as Bruce Tyler had mentioned, on our website, we've created, um, a new series of web, websites, if you go to our homepage, Portland.edu, at the very top, there you'll see a, an aqua colored bar and clicking on that will take you to our restart page and from there you'll see, uh, we've tried to break out the different topics in ways that, that people can digest easily and recommend to us. You'll also find our entire plan, the one which is going to be by the state, one which continues to evolve and, and you folks have, have realized, I'm sure in dealing with this crisis, there's a new challenge every day and it demands a new response every day. So we are gonna be continually updating the information here and we encourage you to, uh, re-familiarize yourself with it and, uh, feel free to direct your constituents there whenever they have a question. Uh, I'm imagining there's, and it's, there's so much happening, it's hard to tell what's the most important thing to share, life on campus, life life in the city right now is going to be very different and people are going to behave in very different ways. I do want to let you know, because I know there's concerns, first there's concern with six thousand five hundred people coming in from other places, um, we're concerned as well and we're addressing it, we want you to know that all students are going to be undergoing a quarantine period. Um, international students have all been asked to come to Portland fourteen days early so that they can quarantine on campus, we have set aside our entire complex on West Campus, which is going to be our quarantine and our isolation house. That's sixty-four, um, sixty-four rooms that we can use to isolate people in quarantine now. Students who are coming from states that are on the governor's watch list and it seems to be growing every single day, these students are also being asked to come to, come to campus fourteen days early to quarantine. Some of them will be quarantining in their off-campus apartments, um, we will be keeping track of all these students and so I should say that all students and faculty staff are being asked to quarantine for a week before they come to campus. So regardless of whether you fall into a high-risk category or where you're from, we're asking you to spend that week before you start, we're placing extra precautions, staying away from large groups and quarantining with your family. The way we're going to check up on this, everybody on campus is going to have to do a pre-screen just to get out there. It's set up on the internet behind our, uh, behind our firewall, your students will sign in, they'll have to answer a series of questions and depending on their answers, they'll get responses to direct them what they need to do. Do they need to not come to school, uh, make in contact with the health services, we'll probably arrange a test, are they cleared to come in, are they required to take some other actions? Um, we have a system in place where we will get a daily report of who has followed us and they will get either a green or a red dot will show up on their cell phones and they all have cell phones so anybody can challenge them on campus at any time. But more importantly, we are going to have people who are employed to remind us, if you don't click in for a day, you're going to be getting an email saying you need to do this. If you are persistent and we're still working out the exact details, for your initial screening in order to come to campus, we will put a hole by your back, you won't be able to do anything. Once you're on campus, this daily screening will have to become a habit, you'll be expected to do it every single day whether you come to campus or not, you may not have any classes that day, you're still expected to do this thing because we're not worried just about what happens on campus, we know very well that the behavior our students exhibit has to take place off-campus as well as in campus. That's why we're, we're implementing many, many education measures, we're trying to get peer council ongoing because we need significant bias and we're optimistic about this, even though we read reports about students and we know we are gonna have students try to get away with it. More than half of our students come from areas in the state that experience the worst of it, the worst is what their nation experiences in terms of COVID-19. We have many students who were sick and couldn't do it, many students who lost family members. So we feel that although all young people think they're indestructible and don't always make the right decisions, this group, we think a majority of them will have some understanding. Um, we are reaching out to landlords, we've sent them a communication, um, asking them to help us enforce with our students, we're working with city police, uh, we're gonna have a joint communication that goes out to show our students that we are in solidarity with, with the cities at the finger of one state and anything that happens off-campus is, the many, many rules you will see on our website, which students are gonna be expected to follow because of COVID-19, failure to follow any of them is a breach of the COVID student contract, which immediately kicks in our due discipline all the time. Uh, there's a range of things, but it very quickly escalates to suspense because if someone is walking these rules and disregarding what we, what we need them to do, we can't have them in court. So that's something that we're, we're going to be working on, um, and, and the most important of these, what's going on campus, everybody's going to be wearing masks pretty much all the time, in classes, walking to and from class, we're gonna be requiring them to wear masks when they go into the restroom, when they clean, they're gonna be, have cleaning supplies everywhere, when they're done with the desk, they'll be expected to clean it off, when they're done with, in their apartment with utensils, they'll have to disinfect. And, um, we are serious about enforcing all of these things. One thing I would, I know that there's oftentimes, and we got this in Spain, where there were students who were gathering in larger groups than they should have, weren't wearing masks, were socially distanced. We want to know about that, um, we're trying to figure out a way to fuse it, obviously if you see something like that, the first move to make is to call the police because we're, we can't react as immediately as police can, but we can react further up. I have a website and we're going to be making it more prominent, but right now in our student conduct, um, department page, we have a form for reporting info, we use it for bias incidents and sexual assault incidents, but we have a separate category listed for COVID-19 stuff and we urge anyone to fill that out and we will look into it. Uh, the more details we have, the better the chances are that we can make a case and take action against the student violence and this is something we're, we're not going to be shy about doing because it's in, it's in all of our efforts to keep the city, the city of Portland as coronavirus-free as we, as we possibly can. And, uh, I know Brian told me I only had two of the hour tonight, so, uh, so I'll wrap it up, um, but I, people have questions, I will answer them, uh, as best I can with the caveat that, uh, there are still an awful lot of vulnerable students and I imagine there will be until there is only a vaccine.
Yeah, so as a reminder, so I'm gonna ask the questions, uh, at this point be limited to council, me and Mr. Time and, uh, if we're, if you make it easy on Fred, maybe he'll come back in two weeks because the eighteenth is our next meeting and that is before the college comes back, so I'd like to, uh, understand bringing Mr. Pierce back August eighteenth to answer any additional questions that arise if you can, um, uh, council, any questions at this point. Katie Stillman.
Mine is not so much a question, it's a comment, um, I read a very good article in the Atlantic Magazine that was out, I think it was titled, "Schools and Communities Are Already Getting Ready to Blame Students for COVID" and it reminded me that we have compassion for these kids who are young, there's a lot of anxiety, it was cohort, uh, very, the, the, the human companionship, just like everything else, they need to also act age and they will make mistakes and so I'm just asked that people who see something going on that they're wearing a dress, if you're by saying something to kids, because it's already happening in the state through, uh, most of the kids in our communities, just to think through the college thing, um, just bear in mind that they're young and, you know, not that we're gonna kind of make the slack, they shouldn't wear masks in social distancing, but remember that have some compassion when dealing with them.
Our, our experience is that, and, and thank you for your time, I think you're absolutely right, um, I know when we eliminated tobacco use on campus, uh, it was, it was very difficult, but we didn't have any, um, disciplinary rest practices, it was all education and taught them, it's for most students, it's a simple reminder, hey, you know that you could be in danger of, when it comes to your mask, you could be in danger of some, of somebody else and usually it all walks the rest of the way, um, but thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, Bruce Tyler.
I don't know, I don't, go ahead, you wanna go ahead, you can have it.
I'm Michael. He's before beauty.
Bruce the guy, if you want to. Fred, I, I did hear you mention, uh, regarding, uh, uh, sanitizing and everything, is, is the college gonna be providing students with, uh, with masks or are they expecting to bring along with them?
No, we're providing a, we, we use masks for every student as well as encouraging, we've provided them with a list of things to bring, which is additional masks and all offices will have boxes of paper masks, that if there's a situation where somebody forgot one, we'll be able to, uh, to make it available.
Okay, good, very good. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tyler. Um, first of all, a couple things, so will you be having students sign any kind of a, a pledge or a statement in terms of, as part of a continuing reflection on how their actions are going to impact other people and that, you spoke of that very eloquently and how important that is, so will they, will they be doing something like that as well?
They absolutely will be, um, at the point, they are doing what they need to gain entry to campus, in other words, take the, uh, do whatever quarantine is required and doing their initial screening, um, which they've been asked to, uh, begin doing as early as, uh, Friday, some of them are coming to campus earlier, so we need to get a, a support for them, but the next step before they're allowed to move into a residence, a, a candidate class or come on campus is to sign a, an affirmation, a promise to abide by this diagram and that gives us, um, additional strength in terms of student conduct if it gets to the disciplinary and, but it also gives us an opportunity to educate and to reinforce students how important this is and that it's not about them and whether they're worried about catching something or not, it's about the faculty, it's about the people they need in the street, it's about, um, the students around us who may have underlying conditions or are supporting or are struggling, so yes, thank you for the reminder.
And, and thank you for the presentation, you guys, uh, based on what we know, like what, as of seven fifty-one, August fourth, twenty twenty?
Uh, yeah, although to be fair, I haven't checked my email in about half an hour, so I'm sorry.
So I, I thank you for coming to the chat line and coming back in a couple of weeks because people in the community have been wondering, you know, what, what's the plan and, you know, also thanks for reminding us, uh, and I'm guilty of this as well, that many of these students are coming back from, uh, places that have seen some tragedies and some of them have, um, gone through tragedies and I, and I, I think it's, who's always remember that, that, you know, these students are, they're young, they're young adults and they're also going through some, some different issues and so that's, uh, thanks for, you know, mentioning that, I, I haven't really, um, talked myself, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. Any questions for council? Tom Michael.
What I, what I'd like to see is a, a level with CEO space in, uh, doing an interview with Fred to, uh, sort of be some of these, uh, questions that a lot of us have been, uh, asked in the last few weeks regarding, uh, what's it take regarding college students coming regarding, what's the take regarding college students coming back? And I think, since perhaps two of Brian have reached out to them, and Fred has an open schedule, so give some schedule with them.
I look all pretty shy.
I see that.
No, I'd be happy to reach out.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's a very good idea, and I thank you for bringing it up.
Welcome.
And I, hey man, I just mentioned something on a different side of this, because we've been talking about the plan, and what they're going through, and going through, etc., but I also, I want to recognize the college has worked with Megan Martin over at Convention and Tourism, and they're putting together things that feed scanning, healthy activities that they can't particularly, that are available around the community, and I think that, everything is important as the other side, the world, are concerned about, because these are young people, they're going to be getting a lot of energy, they have, but they don't want to be out enjoying things and providing them, it's not going to be enough, you can't, you can't, you can't, providing them with healthy alternatives is going to be hugely important, so, you know, the college has to recognize that, and working with us, working with our community, another example, town and town, working together to keep everybody safe and healthy and enjoying the community, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
And there have been multiple meetings, and it's involving different constituencies. I know that the county health department, the local hospital have been engaged and involved, we've had specific conversations simply between the city and SUNY about some of the issues in some of the burns. I know that SUNY has reached out to the Convention and Visitors Bureau to try to make sure that when students come in, they're aware of different attractions and things to do, kind of do things safely as well within the community. And Fred, I appreciate your proactiveness, and your willingness and your desire to be here tonight, speak with us, and again, hopefully see you in two weeks, which will be just before moving weekend.
Whenever you want me, I'm happy to talk.
Okay, good. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Fred. And conversations continue with other entities throughout our community, and if you've got children or just an interest in terms of what the school district is doing, I believe their plan was posted today, and they had the opportunity to look. But they are talking about how to reopen the school safely, and they've been in communication with the administration over there, and looking forward to hearing more, first from the governor about what will be allowed, and then what is being planned within our city as well. So we're going to move on to agenda item, what will now be agenda item number two, and that's consideration of a resolution to accept or reject the proposal, six thousand dollars with other considerations, set forth in a proposal for the purchase of the property at one nineteen Pemberton Street, Portland, New York. Counsel members, I believe you've got the opportunity to unmute yourselves, give me a wave if you're having a hard time with it, but I need a motion to consider. Troy Beckwood, second, Katie Philammon, discussion, and I would defer to incorporation counsel. Mr. Van Donk, could you give a explanation of where we are?
Sure. I mean, we've been on this topic for a decade, I think, and for a variety of reasons, we've not been able to sell it. Recently, we proposed, Matt and I, to do a request for proposal, so that we could catch some of the things that the council was concerned about, and make sure that that was part of the proposal, and that it was a strict, you know, sale and transfer. We did that, we proposed the proposal, and it was approved probably two months ago. I sent it again today, so that you have that as a little bit of a background. We did receive a single proposal. We had sent it out to the Portland papers, we'd sent it to the Yiddick papers, and we got a single proposal. I would say that ninety percent of the proposal was being honored and considered relative to a lot of the things that were raised at these terms, like that it wouldn't be continued use, or extending any sort of auto body, or trash, or cars, or things that would not be good for the neighborhood. We got a proposal for a professional office that would be extending the intento garage, and they complied with all of these external terms. The only concern that I have relative to that proposal, and why I would be recommending that at least at this point, that you reject the proposal, is that the offer was far below of the minimum that was set by the request of proposal. The RFP asked for a minimum of a hundred thousand, the bid came in at sixty. So that changes really the deal, because if we had or could accept that sixty grand, others might have bid. So I think that at this point, because it was so different, a hundred to sixty, and not even close enough, I think, to properly negotiate without doing another bid, that I'd be rejected, and then I would request that you let me go back to the drawing board a bit, and come up with another RFP, so that we can rebid it, and during that time, often talk with you and others about, particularly the price. You know, it wasn't without some consideration, we came up with a hundred thousand. We came up with a hundred thousand because that was a fair price, we took into account some of the things that we wanted done with a particular property, we weren't just going to let them at their free will do that, because that has some lowering of value. Our assessed value for twenty twenty for that particular property was in the one forty range, so I don't think we were far off from where we started. But there's just one bid, and the sixty thousand being different, I think that legally we need to reject it at this point, and go back to the drawing board. So that's that, and if anybody has questions, obviously ask, but I really think it's not much of a close call here.
Troy has his hand up, but Tom Michael, you've been on counsel a while, and you were around, you and I were both on counsel when this first came around, so I don't know if there's anything that you would like to share, if you want to get it started before I go to Troy.
So I, you know, I regret that way back when, that, you know, we could have done a better sales pitch regarding the housing development that went into there, several years ago, and I'm pretty sure Brian even called it that. But the residents in this ward were truly afraid that this was going to turn into a rolling from housing, which they were totally against. And now the fact that I was given a chance to try to sell this again, the question come up regarding what would be allowed in this small parcel, and some residents have expressed in terms of this would be an extension of the current business regarding the way that property is zoned. So I would like to see the zoning changed before we move forward to include this as office space, and not an extension of somebody's business.
So right now it's zoned as general industrial, as I look at that. And talking about zoning, there's a professional office, there's also a general business, regional general business, local central businesses.
With the new mask, you probably want to be considering the general business local, but that's a similar idea to the professional office space. That looks really very specific around the hospital area.
I guess, I guess we, I guess we kind of, we kind of knew that Jerry was going to be on this, because he's expressed an interest all along, but I guess what residents don't want to see is an extension regarding what currently is there, and the office would be pushed closer to town, the street would, everything else that's standing behind it.
All right, so it's a potential for zoning, let's go around, Troy had his hand up.
Troy? Come on up. First time, obviously we approve it, which I hope we do, but obviously, in front of a crime, we get a building committee, you know, so that's, that's, that's up to the address at that point. As far as the bidding goes, I mean, we set out the bid, was there a, what was in the bid, was it a minimum, maximum?
Minimum of one hundred thousand.
Well, a minimum of one hundred thousand.
Yep.
Was the only bidder, I don't think you have any more money for it, my personal belief. As far as the housing development goes, I don't think you'll ever see anything going there, as far as the housing, you know, it is a brownfield, you're probably going to have, nobody's going to want to finance the property. He's willing to assume all the responsibilities, so I'd like to see us move on with it. Get it done, it's been there for too long.
Go to, go, Tom, do it.
Brian Alderman just came up a year or two ago, with this Ward Alderman, and Matt was talking about something about somebody from Africa coming in, and maybe making an offer. I remember that, something came up with that. Rick, how far has this been reached out to, how, where did you send this out to, how many counties and?
We've sent it just mostly locally, Portland, Ben Thompson County. But we could expand that area certainly, if, I think if we modify the RFP a little bit.
Whoever the bidder was a couple years ago, and I remember this, he obviously didn't bid, person that was sort of developed down there, and that's what Matt was talking about, right? He didn't put it, okay. Well, when something like, if we've reached out to people, and nobody's bid on this, I agree with Troy, that, I mean, he's the bidder, and that's it. I mean, I know, we understand we had a minimum bid of a hundred thousand, but he's the bidder, and he's, it's sixty thousand dollars, and I know it's low, but he can keep doing this forever. I mean, we just keep, we're searching and searching and searching for the price, you know, we think we can get something.
I agree with you, I give you a comment on both points, I agree, but I'm worried that people did not bid because of the minimum hundred thousand dollar bid, and that that discouraged rather than encouraged bidder. So that's the only concern I have, all the other stuff, Jerry has one hundred percent, other than that, met all of our expectations, and I am sure has wanted to have a great place there, and he is a logical bidder because of this neighboring business. But I'm just thinking that other people might have considered it if it was, if we came off the one hundred.
We also got to also look at the fact that Jerry's been a good business manager of the community, and always worked with us, and done a lot with, you know, different things, with Paul Sandy, and different things with the police department, and he's always supported us as a city. So I think that's to consider also, when we're looking at each other's strength, he's been with the community, good businessman, he's done well for us, so.
I agree. I'm just addressing that at minimum.
So Rick, are you, I mean, the edge is something like, maybe it's a hundred?
You know, that's really up to you, I mean, we're coming far off this value, but yeah, I think given what we, what we've gotten as a potential bid, yeah, I think we need to come into probably into the seventies, or at least eighties, but it's not like we're negotiating, we're starting high and take slow, I mean, this is not that. This is, this is a request for proposal, and it's people react to what we're requiring. But yeah, I think we need to come down into that, Rick, thing.
I'd like to see if other people are interested in bidding on it, if we know the price, and also just see that you can advertise it, and it's the only dog at home as well, in the world.
The interest seems to be coming from Thompson, so that's where we had it.
Here are the earlier interest, Fred.
Thanks. Bruce, thank you. First of all, thank you for sending up that RFP again, so we can review that, because I had forgotten some of the details there. And I have to say, I agree with everything Bill said, I would support this one hundred percent, so I realized, reminding me, reminded by looking at this, that we had had a hundred thousand dollar minimum bid, and this is quite a, or all that, so I would be reluctant to approve this based on, of course, a counsel, and that's probably have a counsel, whose advice is legally, you know, everybody's in favor of, most people I think favor, you know, what the use of this property would be, except legally, I don't think it would be, also I don't think that's a great, I mean, you're probably right, somebody saw a hundred thousand, so I'd be, I'm not going to bid on it, I mean, if there was something less, they might have decided to bid on it. So I would, I would recommend that we take our corporate counsel's advice tonight, and say no to this tonight, and he goes back and figures out something that gives us more wiggle room, when this comes back up again, which I'm sure will. But I, though you're spot on with everything, but Rick has that one point that I just can't, I can't get past that, I believe it won't, that's all.
Troy, make that.
Question again, Rick, so can we put this out for bid, for Mr. Healy, he comes back?
I'm going to make the same recommendation, I think. I think, I think we got to get to a price that he's going to, you know, he's going to make the bid based on our minimum. Or tell me not to have a minimum, say whatever bid comes in, take the best one. You know, that's equally as good advice. I took the rest of the request for proposal serious, and I had a minimum of one hundred. But we don't have to have a reserve, that is entirely a glitful decision that you guys made, not me.
Right. Okay. And that's something.
It's certainly something to consider.
And then Pat McCarthy.
Yeah, so given the conversation so far, I would agree with Katie and Bruce, but, you know, if we put it out for a minimum, put an RFP out for a minimum bid, we should at least follow through the process of agreeing, rebidging it.
Okay, and then I think you can turn right around and do it quickly, I don't want this to speed away. You know, I suspect I can have another request for proposal before you to consider, you know, at the next August meeting.
And then before we get too far away from Tom's suggestion, central for rezoning, because right now it's general industrial, which is the most restricted form of zoning within the city. But on re-zoning, it sounds like, Tom, your suggestion would still make this a permitted use in terms of what's being requested, it just would not allow for something that might be less restricted.
Well, that's correct. We have to be careful of what we, what we wish today, we're going to dissolve into. Keep in mind that there's a federal fair, a store high school, where civil people pass by on a regular basis, and done recently, but through this virus, this appears, it'll be back to normal sometimes, but.
I do have to caution, Tom, I appreciate where you're coming from, and one of the reasons we did the RFP like we did was so that we could get what it is that this neighborhood wanted, in that some control, and some use of it as closer to professional property than the industrial use that's allowed. But for doing a rezoning for a single lot, we will run smack dab into fox zoning, and I think we'll be, we'll be in trouble. And there's been some local, recent local cases that have ruled against municipalities when they attempted to change zoning to accommodate a particular buyer. So we need to be, we need to be concerned about it, I don't know if it's necessarily something that we should rule out, but it's a legal concern that occurs to me.
Okay, so there's, it's a potential for some legal concern with regard to zoning, but the way the RFP was written, correct me if I'm wrong, the way you wrote the RFP, it didn't address, or doesn't address what can and cannot happen with the property, because it's an agreement between the seller and the buyer.
Exactly. That's, yeah, that was, that's the point, and that was what I hope to accomplish by doing it that way.
Jerry wasn't going to meet all that, I guess.
I think he met everything within reason, other than the price, you know, like, you know, I agree with you and Bill, Troy, that, you know, Jerry has done everything, he just, he didn't come close to the minimum bid that was set.
No, actually, all the concern, about forty grand is forty grand.
Uh, actually, yeah, Jerry has done as far as, uh, showing, sharing some plans with, uh, some of us, uh, regarding what the, what the office would look like, uh, had he, uh, been able to purchase that as a, uh. And it was, it was very interesting, uh, so, we'll see what could possibly be there.
Um, I think the worst thing would happen is if we approved it at this point and, uh, we're stuck in litigation for a year. And we don't get a chance for someone to ask to do something. So, that's my caution.
All right, so the motion on the floor is either to approve or not approve. I think it's been pretty clearly discussed that approval is a concern that because it was low, there might have been another bidder that did not submit a bid because it thought it was more than a day. Knowing that it would be less, for a, for a number that, um, hasn't submitted than it may have. Um, and then there's some, a desire to go forward and see what happens. Any further discussion, Council? Tom?
So I guess, uh, uh, once we decide, uh, the outcome of, uh, this vote, uh, we're gonna come back and decide, uh, what, uh, could possibly be a, a, a minimum bid again, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look for.
Uh, for this or the other?
Well, that's sort of what the minimum bid is, I guess. Like, I use that term to change it, but yeah, uh, the, uh, some people don't, but I, I, I'm sure they have. But many, but yeah, that's, that's what will happen. I'll, I'll call the, uh, council, uh, before I commit a, a RFP. Uh, but the RFP, if that's where you're headed, that I, that I send back to you, uh, on, uh, the next, whatever the next August meeting, is, is changeable. Uh, you know, if you want it to be this number or that number, or if you want one of the other conditions that we have to change, you know, I'm, I'm, we'd be looking for you to do that at that meeting and tell me, and then we will put that out for the proposal.
Does that answer your question, Tom?
It does.
Okay.
Okay, put it down.
Yep.
Uh, maybe you froze.
No, I'm, I'm listening to you.
Okay.
So it's been a robust discussion. Um, I'll ask for a roll, pause, vote and make sure I get this correct. Aye, if you're in favor of selling the property as is, and may if you'd like to wait, and, uh, go forward. I'm gonna count down, we're gonna start with Ward eight and go down. So, eight Ward.
Uh, may.
Seven.
Aye.
Six.
Aye.
Five. Uh, Jackie? Three.
May.
No. Two.
May.
And first Ward.
May.
So, the, uh, vote tells two to five, and I think, and, and I agree in terms of the advocacy of the business. Contemptors have done wonderful things in this city, not just as a private business, but also their partnerships in a number of ways.
It's no reflection. Not a reflection period, and, and it, and it.
We've worked very well with them, and I know that we can work with them, though. I understand and appreciate that there's legal concern here. Uh, okay, if somebody else knew that we were going to set a lower bid, then we may have put the bid in. So we'll make sure when we come back, revisit and keep the city legally clean as well. But, uh, yeah, you know, looking at the proposal, it looks like a very attractive way to, uh, dress up the property. And Tom, I completely agree, it's an approach to the high school and what the message that we send to our community, in particular our kids, is, uh, critically important, we want it to be attractive. All right. We're gonna move, I think, a little bit quicker on this next one, maybe. Consideration of the resolution to recognize and appropriate eight thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars, sixty nine cents from police department, uh, vehicle maintenance from NYMER, which constitutes our insurance coverage. There were covered four repairs, um, on a Chevy Tahoe that were damage sustained. Uh, motion to consider. For a backwood, second Katie Solomon, discussing. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Oppose? Fair. Number three, discussion on a potential for overnight parking on Hubbard Street. And this is up as a discussion item. And typically, the council wants to move forward, and the recommendation will be that the next step would be go to the board commissioners through the Department of Public Works, which also doubles as the public CHP. Uh, in a nutshell, I will summarize between please fire DPW junk spinner or miss anything. But we did have conversations and some of the concerns. If you do this, then what happens if the car is not moved? Uh, talked about the potential to tow, and Rick, I believe you have some legal concerns about that, if somebody parks illegally. Because the question comes up, what if you got cars parked some whole time? And that is not enough space, the space that is left for a file to get through, nor is it enough space for a fire engine to get through. So it raises some potential questions in terms of safety with, uh, snow removal and emergency services. Uh, the line of sight from police, one of the topics that was mentioned was that it's easier to enforce line of sight. Officers can look down the street and tell right away in terms of if cars are parked or not. And I believe Steve also mentioned the opportunity, cars are another object that somebody can use to basically conceal themselves. If they're out there and they've got techless and good intentions. Uh, but the floor is open, council floor, conversation about this proposal. Fred, back in.
Um, I think it's, uh, a pretty good considerable, uh, concern. And obviously the residents on Hubbard Street and probably for other residents in the, in the city. Um, I definitely think that, um, obviously, you know, bow down to night, you know, you know, no matter what, I gotta have a public camp. But I'd like to see at least move on to the, uh, DPW committee, once they're, you know, recommendations and concerns. And then, uh, we can take it from there. But it's certainly something that needs to be pursued because of the, you know, the scientific issues. And obviously the concerns of the, the residents on, uh, on the streets. So, that's why I'd like to see at least be heading in the right direction.
Katie Solomon?
I'd very much advise this to one Hubbard Street because, um, our perspective is present in similar, uh, uh, you can't park on the street overnight, you can't park on any city street overnight. We also have narrow driveways and you've gotta back all the cars out in order to get the one at the top of the driveway. Turn around, it's a pain when people come to visit, you get commissions on the trees, um, for them to park overnight. You feel very generous about that, you didn't look like you ever used to own a situation. But I can't help but think that Hubbard, um, and that if we end up allowing overnight parking on Hubbard, it's gonna be all a mistake and, and so I'm, I'm happy to have it as banked out. And to have, um, the next commission address it and look at the safety protocol, but I feel reservations in terms of doing that.
This Ward, go cut under.
Um, the purpose of two to six parks is storm, and the big cars off the street. It's always been like that since I was a police officer. Uh, I lived in Long Island, and in Long Island, they have no restrictions on the streets. And, you know, these, people are, they're in a blizzard during the storm, people are lazy, they sit there and they let the snow pile off. They don't, they don't move the car and they let it sit there for days. That's my fear, is a dangerous situation where, you know, cars just sit there and eventually the snow melts and then you get the thaw and then they move their cars. Um, and also Katie's concern about it going to other streets. Um, we all know that once you start something, uh, somebody else is gonna start something else. So, it's, I think it's a, I don't like the idea. Safety wise.
For further conversation, Tom Michaels and then Pat McCarthy.
I can visually recall, uh, when my son was attending college in Boston, uh, uh, what the streets looked like, uh, after a winter storm. Uh, after taking my son back to college, uh, after the winter break. Uh, Bill's absolutely right. I mean, the snow is piled high, high on these cars, uh, after the fall comes through. Uh, and then if somebody wants to move it, they have to shovel the car out. So that's where they're gonna put the snow, even on the sidewalk or in the street. Uh, and it's not uncommon, uh, for, uh, snowplows come down too and, and take out a roll of cars, uh, just because we couldn't, uh, add a couple dozen distance. And, you know, that's gonna place a light bill, be back on a, a DPW pilot in the city. I gotta, I gotta agree, uh, that, um, you know, it's a nice idea, and, and, you know, with all suffered to, uh, our kids, uh, having to, uh, move cars, uh, throughout the day, throughout the evening. Uh, the way we, uh, stationed it, uh, was that, uh, last in, uh, first out. And, uh, you know, that checking order was established during the day, uh, so we weren't constantly moving cars back and forth. But until you've experienced that yourself, uh, you have no idea what, uh, what you're asking, uh, uh, the public to endure. That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, I believe Mick Doherty from Public Works, did you have your hand up? Up next.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to take a minute and to say, you know, I think that, that looking at situations like this, um, you know, are progressive, maybe there's things impending, uh, maybe there's things that, that we can figure out from discussions like that. I don't know of any other parking. I know that, that Cat said something in, in an email earlier this week about Ithaca. Uh, and I'm not familiar with, with a, a lot of the parking out there. But for Cortlandville, I don't think there's any on-street parking during the wintertime. You can during, uh, you know, outside the month of November to, I think, April or May. But I don't think that the neighboring communities that do allow you to park at night allow you to park in the wintertime at all, overnight. Because of the problems that you guys just dealt with. Um, I'll take this to the DPW board of commissioners, obviously, um, as quickly as I can, um, and we'll just sit there and pick on it. And then I'll report back.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion, to Council? All right, so, oh, Pat McCarthy?
Um, so I just wanted to add in, the experience I had in Ithaca is during the winter seasons, they do odd even parking. I think it's pretty, maybe like, uh, for worse or for better, something like that. I, you know, it is one option, you do find yourself unburying a car from time to time, for sure. Um, and also you really gotta keep on top of when odd starts and when even starts. I, I don't know what their DPW, um, has experienced as far as planning. I understand that that could be confirmed in, in Portland as well, so, you know, it's worth considering and it would be a big hit with the board, I'd say.
And, uh, Rick, did you raise your hand earlier? Oh, that's a straight bar, please repeat that.
Yeah, I did want to make sure you saw Cat.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? All right, so we gotta be able to have it reviewed by the Public Works Board. And, um, have the opportunity to look at what the issues are, what the concerns are, and then come back to Council. Uh, you know, and not to make things more complicated, however, if need be, and Nick, I don't know if this discussion about odd even, we're simply designating one side or the other, but there's not an option for both sides. Uh, they're seasonal, as Cat, I mean, if we're gonna progress, making it seasonal, we're at first, okay, it's only during the warmer months. And after a year or two, maybe we'll withstand to the colder months. Uh, and Council, you know, we keep having the discussion regarding parking and it being a commodity. Uh, isn't it worth the conversation about permanent parking on the street? Similar to the charge that we have for permanent parking in the residential spots in city life. Uh, so some additional, not to make things more complicated, but some additional options that might make it viable. And I'll tell you, the city, I, I've been over there and I see that there is, I mean, there's some driveways that, uh, are packed. There's some accommodations, there's a couple times when I've been over there, cars in the street. But, uh, uh, one of the nice things is when I go over there, I've walked over there from City Hall on my way home. We've got a walkable, bikeable community. We want to encourage people to take advantage of that, to walk and bike as opposed to having vehicles. And, uh, well, Tom Michaels very eloquently expressed it, though, when he got bid, that he's got multiple vehicles, it's about. So I look forward to hearing back from what the Public Works Board has to say. And, uh, something to Council will do over further. Further discussion on this? Uh, Rick and Donson?
Uh, just to be sure of what the, the, the DPW's mission is on, or the public safety's mission is. Is it just Hubbard Street or generally talking about overnight parking on city streets?
I'd like to see it the same way.
Oh, oh, oh. I'm glad I was sitting down for you to say that. Right now the discussion is Hubbard. Are we okay with limiting it to Hubbard, or?
Yeah, we're telling Hubbard.
Okay. Katie Solomon?
Yes, but can they also consider those other possibilities that the, the, the board raised in, uh? You have ideas, that process? Oh, yes.
Very good. All right, we've had some good discussions, we're moving on to agenda item number four. Resolution to set recognized and appropriate nine thousand one hundred twelve dollars in proceeds from sales surplus equipment from the fire department and transferred to, uh, control motor equipment to offset unanticipated repairs to the aerial truck apparatus, motion to consider. So, cut under seven, Katie Solomon, discussion. All those in favor of to say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Fair. Number five, consideration of the resolution to let the hiring freeze to fill the position of a county clerk in the city's court office. Uh, registrar is something that can be designated, so it is officially just a county clerk. Uh, motion to consider. So, cut under seven, Jack McHattman, discussing. So this position became vacant when it had a retiree in another department. And the person that was in this position, every item was successful in terms of retaining that position. So it is currently vacant. All those in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Fair. And then the next question would be resolution, I, I need to add this, resolution for permission to hire, to lift the hiring freeze and then permission to hire someone to fill the position of a county clerk in the city's court office. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second, do type that, discussion. All those in favor of put that?
Aye.
Oppose? Fair. Number six, resolution to approve the mayor entering into an agreement with Fisher Associates for the main street utility improvement project. Motion to consider. So, cut under seven, Troy, discussing. So, part of the downtown redevelopment, uh, correct me if I missed anything, but part of the downtown redevelopment for the utility work, we have to contract out for the design. And Fisher is the company that we have that's doing the overall planning. But when you get into the specifics, what needs to be done, uh, we need a consultant and somebody who will draw up, you have the plan. And we can do that with Fisher. Rick, what on earth?
That's exactly it, um, and maybe Nick can help a little bit better, but, uh, that's the, the. That's exactly it. Um, and maybe Nick can help a little bit better, but, uh, that's basically, uh, part of the, you know, just working, work in progress within plan and, and project like this. And, and we could need to add this.
This is the utilities. We're talking stormwater, wastewater, and water under. But I ask for most when you support.
I think it's good, but I, but I think mostly, yeah, it seems good, man, but.
Let's take Dave's truth and then somebody, Katie Sullivan, thank you. So we are efficient. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution affirming and approving the mayor's executive order regarding enforcement of COVID-19 related precautions, including assembly of people socially distancing and wearing a mask. Let me read what we have as a tentative executive order. Share this with the public. And I can talk about the, um, rationale why I'm not going to look for most to consider yet until there is a little bit of discussion. Quarantine restrictions on social gatherings in the city. Whereas we recognize the dangers that could spread of COVID-19 present. And we recognize that we start of not just public, public colleges, but also public and private schools in the city of Portland. In return, faculty, staff, students, and other employees, bringing employees back to work. That our responsibility to protect our citizens, including, uh, full-time residents. Um, that we recognize the expectations for all to return to normalcy through socialization, entertainment, and assembly is going to be attractive. But we must meet our obligations to protect and serve our residents. Now therefore, as mayor, the chief of fire and police shall enforce the following and shall be authorized to enforce the following terms of this order by some means necessary, including employment of various sections of public health law, criminal procedure law, and penal law of the state of New York. So effective August 27th at noon and through and including September 16th at noon. Any gathering or event with 25 or more participants at any location in the city of Portland is directed to be either postponed or canceled. Educational functions in existing community eateries and/or restaurants were established in place, licensed by the New York State Liquor Authority are hereby exempted. The mayor may upon request exempt certain events. Any request must be supplemented with the event's plan, the COVID-19-related safeguards, and planned implementation. Any violation of this executive order may be deemed a violation of penal law 240 points or five. Uh, and then the opportunity is done. So, the reason why I put this in front of council. Within the matter of a couple weeks, we will have thousands of people returning to the community, returning. We will have some people who may be taking that last vacation in August, going to visit family, going to visit friends, or maybe going to see something, traveling around before the fall takes place. And as we have people gathering back in our community, there's a certain amount of energy. And we're talking about for all community residents. As colleges start, as public schools start, as employers are bringing employees back, and as the resolution states that desire for return to normalcy. We, we need to, as that increases, make some other adjustments, in my opinion, to bring down potential exposures. And if we are to limit social gatherings, and they can be exempted if you have a plan for how you would address potential exposures to COVID-19, this is not a flat, nothing can happen. But limiting to 25 with the idea of limiting potential exposures for a two-week period. My opinion, if we, we get through those first two weeks, in terms of students back in school, employees back to work, and kids back to daycare, if we make it through those two weeks, we'll have a better grasp of where we are in terms of our disease transmission rate in our community. And we'll have managed it, I think, effectively and successfully, and optimistic, but this will help us stay in a good place. Um, I'm gonna ask for most to consider. So we can have discussion, either most to consider, Jack McTapman, and then support, you're the second, Captain Tardy. Council, discussion, what are your thoughts? Tom Michael?
Uh, do any of these violations include fines?
Yes, there's a potential, and jail time. It's the class in the system. Subject to, I think, highest, uh, maximum jail time and a significant, it depends.
And then Bruce Knightler, how'd it end up?
Well, it's pretty much the time of death tonight. You know, what exactly is penal law 240, uh, 45, that one?
That is a criminal nuisance statute that, that where activities are being engaged in that serve no legitimate purpose and in violation of other regulations, uh, can be prosecuted.
Sure, no legitimate purpose. Okay, and, and the maximum would be 90 days plus, uh, some kind of percentage of fines. Is that what you call that? Okay.
I, I, that's entirely up to the judge and the district attorney, uh, but that's the potential.
Right, right, okay.
Thank you.
Katie Sullivan, did you have a hand up?
Can I, uh, can I tell you, I'm up with, no, 25?
Uh, look for it, potentially cutting it down to 20 or less. Uh, I have had communications with the school district. I don't think there's imposed any issues there. We have had these discussions with SUNY as well and with the opportunities for exemptions. 20, 25, and decided to err slightly on the larger stuff. But the number could be changed.
And this came out of some of the discussion that, that we had with Nite Town and some of the other areas and some of the other student college towns. And, go ahead, Captain, Captain Tardy?
I just wanted to ask if there's any other establishments that would be impacted by this? So, you know, I see that eateries, restaurants, um, anybody licensed by the liquor authority is already being, kinda falling under different guidelines. Um, you know, entertainment, um, I think it's CRT, but I know they might not be specific. Um, but anything else that this might impact this establishment that doesn't fall under those guidelines?
Yeah, yeah. The hope is that if we miss somebody, uh, that's why we have the exemption portion. So that if they do have an event or are trying to schedule an event, that they can do a simple, uh, application to the mayor. Uh, I don't anticipate anything particularly formal about that, but simply saying that this is what we're having as a potential of seating 25. And this is how we're going to, uh, protect, uh, the patrons that are going to that particular event.
The, uh, oh, Bruce, Bruce, hang on, it's like, uh, it's like in, further clarify. So when we talk about restaurants, eateries, um, the SLA and the health department, and there's already stringent, there's already stringent regulations that are on restaurants, that are on bars, taverns. Uh, there is strong enforcement currently as well. If you pay attention in terms of what is happening, not just locally, but throughout the, uh, throughout the country. Uh, in New York State, the enforcement has been pretty strong. And I'm not sure we need to put any more or undue burden. I think that our restaurants and our bars have been regulating themselves, and if not, maybe there are other safeguards in place. Uh, Bruce?
I, I had a chance to speak one call. I'll wait for Katie. You, you come back to me.
Okay.
Is that Katie?
Uh, one of my concerns is that, I know that it's the hybrid in the last city housing. Um, the internet sites are also in my door, just a lot of school housing there. Often few of properties that are right next to each other. And how, in the past, when kids have gathered, they drift from one lawn to another. Um, you can have 50 people in two properties next to each other. So that's one concern I have. And that one is, this is asking out of our fees to monitor all of this. Are we counting on people calling in if they see it? Or, I mean, our force isn't that big, you don't have many people driving around it. And so how is this realistically supposed to be monitored?
Rest assured, we ran this by both Pete Sandy and Catalano. And I got a sense that this is well within their valley of wicks and their ability to make certain calls relative to the sort of gatherings you're seeing, you're describing. And we will, we always rely a lot on the police for all of this stuff. And, but I think they can manage.
Captain Tardy?
Uh, I also was curious how we're going, is there, there's some sort of outreach plan? I mean, just as far as with respect to the potential for jail time, that's a pretty significant, uh, discount if somebody didn't understand that they were not complying.
Yeah, Rick, could you speak a little bit more about the penalty case? Uh, I, I don't think our intention is to fill up the county jail, so I can say perfectly, we're not looking to fill the county jail.
No, uh, obviously that is a penalty that will be determined by a judge filtered through both, uh, the district attorney's office and the police before it gets to that point. Uh, typically how this works is that if those kinds of, uh, uh, factors that you just described exist, we have, you know, grownups and, and DA's and judges that understand that, you know, sometimes people who do make mistakes are not aware and can adjust what's going on. And there's a variety of ways to do that, uh, adjournments, contemplation dismissal, don't do it again kind of approaches and, uh, not, you know, that's, those are maximum penalties, mind you. That means that a zero fine can be issued and they don't have to put them in jail. It is simply one of the quivers in the, uh, the tools that we have. Uh, and I don't set the penalty, uh, a plastic fee misdemeanor, which is the criminal nuisance statute, is set by state law. Uh, so, um, you know, if we're gonna choose that particular one, uh, we don't want it to be simply a violation because that has, as we found with some noise violations from minor disorderly conduct, uh, gets to be just the cost of doing business. Uh, so it needs to be a little bit more because of the significant danger that COVID now has, you know, piled on top of it. So, there is some filter to it.
Bruce?
Yeah, I have a couple things. Now, first, a clarification. I see that you've, uh, empowered the fire to enforce this too. So the fire department will be enforcing this as well. Can you, uh, citations or whatever that is, some of these violations?
They can certainly disperse the, uh, um, disperse the, the gatherings under this statute if, if they can. I, I expect that they would utilize the police if there are to be any arrests. Uh, but they will come in contact frequently and, uh, should be involved. Uh, one of the examples I found was when, uh, we had an instance where there was a party at a particular house and there was a structural damage to the house and it came down. The first responding people were, uh, the fire department. Uh, so I think that, uh, to have them authorized, uh, to be dispersing agents, uh, in addition to police.
So the fire could show up and say, you guys are violating this, you need to break yourself. And if they don't, they're making call the, uh, CPD. Okay.
Exactly.
Um, the other thing, just, just to make a general statement, I think, you know, say me on, I guess, it makes kind of my understanding. This applies to everybody in the community if, if you approve this. I don't think people have to approve it. I think you just have to bring this on your mind, is that right now?
Yeah, I, I don't want to operate here, Ed, I like the way that we all work together. And I value council's opinion. And, um, hey, if you don't think this is a good idea, even if I do think it's a good idea, I won't do it. But that's to my person, working together.
I just, I just, I just want to make sure I have my rights coming out. I didn't think you necessarily have to approve, but I, I do think it's probably a good idea. But I just want to make sure we know it's not, it's going to apply to everybody in the community. It's, uh, that has to be understood, uh, going forward.
That's all. Uh, I'd like to take a second, recognize Chief Catalano, and that's Katie Sullivan.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to ask, this is not going to be a law or a, go out and, uh, go for a law action. Um, it is, it is another tool that's, that's playing a dirty role. Um, based on the COVID, there's, we're going to encounter all the typical ordinances and laws we would use, uh, on large gatherings. Well, hopefully in place, um, there will be too much of a danger by the time it gets to that size. So this could get, a little bit of leverage to try to get things under control and, and get the, the, the numbers down so that the danger of that and COVID isn't too strict. We have no desire to want to make mischief or, uh, on anybody. But the new executive order, it seems to the people are, um, what was the, what's, what's, what's the guidelines? That makes any sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And Katie?
Um, so, to Kat's point, how are we going to publicize this so that people know? Because somebody may have already planned, great aunt's house, mine, it's working hard. And how do they know how to appeal to this, they just go out there gathering?
Well, it will go out there in terms of social media. It'll be out in the public, um, we have the traditional news sources. And we'll push the message out. And we do have time. As stated, we're talking about being effective August 27th. Uh, you know, we're trying to do things before schoolchildren are coming back, all ages, schoolchildren. So that gives us three weeks to advertise and share the work. Uh, Mr. Van Donson?
I, I apologize, but, but, you know, a couple other considerations. The department's help will have to pass on this particular thing. So with your sort of acquiescence for approval to do this, I'll be sending that to them. But they only allow the mayor to have this sort of authority, uh, for a 30-day period at a time. Uh, so no matter what, it would end, uh, at the end of September. Uh, Brian and I, after we talked with the, uh, with the SUNY group, felt that having it expire the day after the last council meeting will give you an opportunity to say, hey, we don't need this anymore based upon the numbers and how things are handling. Or alternatively, so that we don't have a lapse, you can also recommend that it continue, uh, past that 30-day period. So that's, that's some of what the timing is. It has some, some hook.
Very good. Council, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Most to passing. Was that your daughter or is that a neck?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, what we're, what we're going to need to do is make that go, the tail end of summer, we get into late August, and then we start on the fall, early September, um, we need to not rest on our laurels, but make sure that we are all being good neighbors, good community members. And it's not an action that we want to take, but this executive order, I firmly believe, is going to help keep everybody safe. Number eight, discuss to regarding keeping a sidewalk curd free. And this is discussion at this point. Would anybody like to start or would you like me to start with some things that I put together? Uh, all right, so I share this with council and, uh, for the public. One of the things in terms of sidewalks and curbs, sidewalks for pedestrians, if there is paint, other colors, it may be more difficult to notice things like cracks or where there's uneven areas. things like cracks or where there's uneven areas and might become more of a danger for pedestrians. Which is why I suppose to council that painting or discoloring in any way, shape or form of sidewalk should not be allowed. Now, if it's chalk and it can be washed away in a day and two, unless it's like this summer where we have police lowering. Uh, but in terms of painting, something that would be more permanent, I would say my recommendation is not a sidewalk. Uh, I also say the same in terms of curbing. Uh, we're having two colors that are predominantly being painted right now. I've seen it in a number of neighborhoods in terms of streets. And one of the issues, blue is a color that is also associated with parking for people with disabilities. And it can become confusing, in particular for visitors to come in and maybe they're used to looking and they say, oh, now that curb is painted a certain color, maybe I'm not allowed to park there. So somebody may, if they notice red, well, red is no parking. Blue might be for people with disabilities. So in terms of parking issues that arise there, my recommendation to council, again, is to not allow painting of curbs from this point forward. In terms of painting of streets, there are some things that, some steps that council followed up previously. And, uh, I have ten suggestions that I would recommend for discussion. Uh, number one, a request for street painting must come from a city resident and looking for a signature that has thirty signatures from other city residents, names and addresses. Uh, like most things, I recommend that we establish the permit fee. Number four, the design, including wording, meaning, colors, requested size, must be included in terms of the application. Number five, hire or use professional painters or experienced artists who are able to submit some form of example to past work that is similar or greater than scope than what is proposed. Number six, mayor will work with the applicant to choose an appropriate location and ultimately, it's the city's discretion where the artwork can be displayed. Seven, painting must be done overnight on a night that's determined by the city to minimize disruption of traffic. And part of that is also selecting a potential rain date. Number eight, type and quality of paint must be approved by the city. Number nine, applicant is responsible for the drying process and recommendation will be the use of blowers to help dry the surface. And number 10, public streets are claimed to be to reopen by 7:00 AM tomorrow morning, no later than 8:00 AM. So I believe that this is consistent with what council authorized and allowed with the previous street painting and would give consistency going forward to use the request. Council thought. David Silverman?
Um, does this mean that places that have already painted their curbs without just stains until they, they wear off and they apply to, you know, as curbs or as dams? So let's say like the song Hotel, they have a big shamrock in front of it apparently.
All right, cool. Sidewalks and curbs, I think anything that is currently there, and my recommendation would be for tonight, after resolution, that the thinking of sidewalks and curbs from this point forward is not allowed. Uh, and for the reasons previous were stated. Algae sidewalks and curbs, now painting of streets. Um, anything that is currently painted, if somebody can prove that it's painted before council passes the resolution, for lack of a better term, grandfathering, okay, you did it before, we had an express policy on it. But when it fades, no touching up, no re-painting. Uh, Mr. Dozy? And then we'll come back to Chris Ward.
Can you just, is it possible to make a note that there's nothing to utility markings? They're normally painted in curbs and sidewalks and stuff for ESN Y-mark? Sounds kind of, like we might not have to say that, but if people do see paint marks all over the place, um, I don't want that to be any question to what they ask.
Okay, and, uh, gotcha. Utility work you said, right? Utility mark out, yeah. Utility mark out. Uh, Captain Cosby, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I think as we're considering, uh, you know, moving forward with painting streets, um, we also want to be considering end of life of it. Um, you know, these things fade over time, uh, paint, you know, kind of rounds off. Is there, is there consideration for either repainting? Or is there any work that we would need to consider for returning the street back to its original street condition?
Question is on the floor, for all.
I think part of my point is just that, you know, to what degree do we want street painted? And to what degree do we want to see, you know, painted on streets? Is there maintenance required for that?
Question, we can come back to you.
Can we hear from Nick?
Nick, did you have your hand up? Just not, you're being called on anyway.
Yeah, all I was, I was gonna say was, Cap brings up a good point. Um, because usually, I mean, I understand that this year was, was a non-typical agency again. Um, but I'd, I'd like to keep some of this in mind as far as my department goes, just because when we refurbish streets, I would hate to do something over some piece of message or artwork, you know, right after it's completed. So just kind, some kind of communication loop on what we're planning to do, what work is upcoming. Uh, or if we, uh, in areas maybe where, where we think that we don't have upcoming work. Um, I'm not really sure, it's fresh in my mind, but I just thought I could bring it up as far as, um, hate being a concern.
That's a good point, so you do that, this should be good then, because people would be very offended to approve their painting and it ends up being painted over. And to Pat's point, once things start looking pretty tatty, um, you know, faded and not as attractive as they originally were, with me, I think they were painted over instead of, um, just being left to gradually wear off. What happens with the, what do they do with the, um, previous paintings on the street? With it, it just, right since?
Yes.
The back is wear off over time with it.
Don't clap your hands.
So, I got a question, I wasn't allowed to answer this on the station. Um.
Don't apologize to that.
So, curbing is city property, right? Okay. Sidewalk, is that city property or is that the owner's prop or landlord's property?
Or it's with the, right away by the city.
Okay. So what's the difference between painting streets and painting, uh, curbing? What's the difference? I don't understand. For allowing, for allowing the city streets, it's a city property. Why aren't we allowing curbing, other than the fact that, you know, uh, handicap and all that? What is the difference? I don't understand.
Yeah, the, uh, explanation I give is my rationale for why I think curbing might be difficult. It's going to potentially be confusing or problematic for visitors, uh, understanding if it's actually an official demarcation or something else. And when we talk about streets and it's a location decided upon in consultation with the city, then we can take that into account. Right now, we can't take that thing to account. Property owner in front of their property, it's city property, but they're making that choice, regardless of if it is going to potentially confuse people who may be looking for a parking spot.
Okay, I just, I just still think that city property, city property, you don't allow the curbs, you don't allow it in the city streets, that's just my, that just makes no sense to me. I just think that that's contradicting what you're saying. You know, I just don't believe, if I'm down the street and I'm visiting and I see something yellow on this, it could be dangerous for me to drive it and come down, oh my God, it's a way and an obstacle. You can look at it any different way, so I just, I think it's, it's the same thing. I really believe that. It's just, you know, city property, city property. I think we should blanket everybody and not have anything, we're gonna do it. Not just pick and choose where we go and, well, this guy's got a blue curb, this guy's got a black curb, they don't like it, so we're now all gonna make a law and address it because we don't like what, you know. I don't think that's fair. City property, city property, we either have no street painting or no sidewalk paving or nothing. That's, I think that's how we should do it. Not just pick and choose, so we just, you know, someone's got a blue curb and someone's got a black curb, they're not gonna die, now it's, you know, handicap. I think if we just had a blanket, no painting at all, then we won't have this issue at all. That's just my view. City property is damaged, you guys talked about it last meeting, apparently. It's, uh, permanent mischief, making graffiti, making graffiti painting the street. Could be a shamrock or anything, it's making graffiti.
Well, if you find an avenue where people could, if they felt sorry about something, um, just let it paint it. And maybe we should add a time period for how long, um, like how long it will be there so that that would be limited and they have to paint over at the end. Or if they, if they were approved to be there for, like, a few months and it has faded and you're sitting, looking at it and, or then maybe the disaster came and you're like, oh, check it out, begin that time period. With the curbs and with people's self-expression, I think sidewalks ought to do it. I don't see why they need to paint first. And I like moving forward because there's so much interest to have in the application process for painting streets if they just don't want to want to paint the street. And it's based also on a lot of the, um, a lot of the considerations that were in place when the Black Lives Matter was painted.
That's your question, I think, uh, I was, I mean, I agreed, I had that period on, agreed to the, you know, the resolution on painting the streets. Now, I was looking at you, Brian, your proposal, was that a professional painter that painted that? Or I wasn't sure. I mean, it was.
Yeah, so you had, um, Crystal Lyons and, if you want to, and that's part of the discussion. So it was Mal Reagan and Draco and Crystal Lyons were the primaries on that. Uh, they've done some notable work. Uh, Crystal, I'll give the example of the portrait building, the large mural on the side. And, yeah, all these suggestions are consistent with what we've essentially established as a process. So the, uh, discussion, uh, in terms of cost, there was no financial cost or obligation from the city. Everything was borne by the, uh, person who fundraised or a person who donated in terms of it. And in terms of talking about quality of paint, times three to four times, they went close, the ability to work on making sure that it will dry appropriately, the design, everything was there. And in terms of location, council, I'm sure you remember that we had the discussion. There were several locations and at the end of the day, I said, hey, why don't you just let the mayor work with the person and we'll figure out an appropriate location. So it was designated to the mayor to make that decision. And, um, at the end of the day, ultimately, it was my decision in terms of location and size of the road. And if you want to go in a different direction, you can. But I said, all right, what did we do? That's kind of a process and you can formalize it going forward. Uh, Bruce?
Yeah, I just said, uh, we're talking about sidewalks, which is a personal property. I'm thinking if some people, they can't paint on the sidewalks, that just needs to have some First Amendment, um, and not a constitutional expert by any means, but I'd like to thoroughly explore in terms of how they impact someone's First Amendment rights if someone expresses something, like telling me I can't paint, uh, a heart on my sidewalk.
You can stop that, right?
I know, but what if I want something more fundamental, I want to paint it, it's my property. I'm just asking a question. And because we haven't really discussed the First Amendment rights here and it's part of this discussion, Paul.
My neighbor's already painted a, uh, a blue stripe on his sidewalk and I'm not, I'm about to tell you that you can't do that to your sidewalk. Not because it's for the sidewalk, uh, she paid to have it installed and it's on her property.
Russ, like, and I don't think we should be in the business of, just because sometimes people say things you don't agree, it's not our job to tell them they can't, they can't put it there. That's part of what getting the man is about. And I, you know, I'm, I'm just really concerned ahead of time, it's just in terms of discussion.
Yeah, and I would pose the argument that there is a safety concern. So if you're out and it's dust and the lighting somewhat is mixed and there's some artwork or something that obscures and makes it difficult to see for the footwork, is that a potential hazard for somebody who's traveling on foot?
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I don't know the answer to that question, you know, you know, you have to, what if I've done everything I could and I think that, so it goes in the dust? You know, I mean, there's a lot of ways to look at this and I, I don't think we should be, I'm very much spending time discussing this because the issues are important to my mind, First Amendment issues are really important, that's all, but we're, we're worn.
I don't think, uh, what I do, I would be, I suppose, people want to put on a sidewalk, that's, that's what, that's the worst. It's trying to have a, you know, this is very simple, that they let this, they're regulating it. I mean, all of a sudden, we got a quest for all kinds of stuff. So, because now it's been the purview of the city to regulate what people think is. We tell people what kind of sidewalks they have, we make fair sidewalks. We can't make any other sidewalks, because ours can be less fair sidewalk. I don't know if you, if you're going to do it.
Russ? You still want to make my name?
Yes.
What was the question? I'm sorry, please.
Could you weigh in on people with First Amendment rights or case?
All the times I have to go to the bathroom, this has been one of them. Um, I, I can't, I really have done very little research. I think Bruce has a point and is certainly worthy of my research. I don't want to talk off the top of my head, uh, in a, in something that I haven't done any, any real advanced work on, uh, sort of a general discussion about who owns what in terms of the curbs and sidewalks and the roadway. Uh, but I think he has a good point and I was already starting to think about where to look for the answers. So, I'm sorry, that's, that's a complete pass, but, uh, I, I don't want to give that advice.
No, that's, that's, that's okay, that's why we're having this discussion. There's some things here that, that's probably a problem with this group. We have some very reasoned and discussions and a lot of scratch and purposes and things. You look into some things at different angles, so, uh, you know, I don't think you have to apologize, rather, that's just, that's what, how, how, um, we have to get it right.
Okay, so do you, you know, think, uh, you have to, what can you do to make, make things work?
Um, we can, uh, we can take sidewalks out of the mix and just address, uh, painting curbing if you like. Good. Yeah. Yeah, my recommendation is, let's go item by item. So further discussion regarding sidewalks.
Further discussion. I, I would say we wait for, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can. And, Ruth? Very, yeah, I'm pretty.
Okay. And same on curbs and streets?
And same on curbs and streets?
But, like I said, curbing, curbing the streets is the same, city property, I think so. One and all. You know what I'm saying? If we let it allow, the street being painted, you know, the shamrock or whatever, you should have it to curbing also. I mean, you can't be picking and choosing what we do, I think it's just make it standard, you know? You, you can't do that. If, if city property, city property, you allow the curbs, you allow, you allow the street, you allow the curbs. I care what message you have and what message it says, can be green, blue, purple, whatever.
I, I find it's very significant difference constitutionist issue between sidewalks as opposed to curbs and roadways. Um, in one instance, the city is required to maintain both curbs and roadways. Individual property owners are required to maintain, uh, their particular sidewalk, and it's within their particular property. So I see those as two different legal constitution issues. Yes?
Correct. I do have concerns, uh, that were raised regarding, you know, painting the curbing and what message that might send for parking. Um, you know, especially if blue is already designated as a color or for something for parking, it's, it seems like that, there's a safety issue there.
That's the public purpose within any, uh, a regulation of, uh, that sort of thing, that if we are going to limit, we, we have to have a governmental purpose, and that is the one I was thinking of, uh, in terms of limiting both streets and curbing, uh, for that reason. That is that.
Brian?
Go ahead. I have a question for that, you, you have missed the most, you know, if we approve all this, it's, it's gonna come up. You mean, for instance, you got Tompkins Street, which is a state right of way, I don't, we have, we, what do you think there, Nick?
It's fine.
So I think, if you think, there, there's probably most likely, certainly can't paint the street, it's probably can't paint the curb, but they own the sidewalk, so they shouldn't be, they don't have to paint their sidewalk.
As, as far as what, right? I, I would, I would.
I'm, I'm, uh, referring to Tompkins Street being a state highway, I think we got a few others in the city that certainly these residents can't paint the road.
Right, yeah.
We, we do just, we won't paint the curb, but, so basically, there's enough people to be allowed to do the sidewalk, you know, because it's probably the curb owned by the state too.
We, we maintain that, like, we do strike those roads.
Right.
But I, I, I have to say, we, we couldn't, you know, um, authorize painting on a street that's not allowed.
You know, what other streets we have in the city, uh, that's actually designated state? Well, you got, uh, two eighty-one, part of two eighty-one in the city.
Uh, you got Clinton Ave, you got Fort Watson Street, you got Tompkins, you got Church, um, some of two eighty-one, but, yeah, we, we would have to defer to the state. Um, if we got an inquiry that somebody wanted to do something on one of those groups, we would probably defer to, uh, like, region three GOP.
Right, yeah, which I thought, that's why I was bringing it up. So I just think if it's fair to them, people, most likely, yeah, they'd do the same, um, thing all, allow that, that, I would, it's not going to be fair to them if they can't paint something they really like to do and that they should have the opportunity to do it on the sidewalk.
Alright, so the, uh, it asks us for corporates and councils to do more research and look at all streets separately in terms of sidewalks, curbing, streets? Yes, or?
Agree with.
Yes. Very good, and, um, I'd be remiss if I did not point out, there has been a request for another painting. Uh, council, how would you like you to proceed in terms of addressing that request?
Pretty rough, it is.
Uh, we've had, I think, ba- basically, two separate individuals, one for taking a blue line between the double yellow on Green Book, and another for painting something along the lines of, uh, Blue Lives Matter someplace.
I tell them, bring their proposal forward, we'll vote on it next meeting, or maybe we'll have this all figured out by next meeting, right, like this homework, don't you?
Uh, I got, I think we should, if we're gonna vote on this, we gotta have, I don't believe, and we haven't had any objection to what Brian brought up, those two, the situations. So, if we're not gonna have any, we're not gonna agree what Brian says in his memo, then I think we should vote, like we voted last time, in a forum like we have here about Black Lives Matter, with these other issues, we're not gonna go through this, jumping through hoops, Doc, and just have a vote. That's what I believe.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying, but do you think, do you think we should table this until we have this printed out, straightened out?
No.
I think we should have a vote on it, like we have Black Lives Matter, and not, if it's gonna be a vote on this, just like Black Lives Matter on each of them, why don't we have a vote, just like we had on that, and not wait for all these different situations to make people, it's not fair for other people to jump to hoops if we didn't have this, you know, when we voted Black Lives Matter, we should do the same process just to make it fair, and we'll vote, vote that way. So we just do what we've done in the past and, and if, and if we get some kind of situations in place, then we'll.
Well, I honestly, yeah, I think we should vote on it, without the situations, just to make it fair.
I think they asked you. If they don't go forward, any kind of situations, it's not off at some point?
Because there's been a proposal from Brian, from, from people, I think that we should do it, have a vote, like we had with Black Lives Matter, and after that, we can have, you know, often more in the past. That's what I think.
Alright, I understand, thank you.
Alright, so, then, okay, Jackie, and then Katie.
Am I correct in understanding that when you set forth, Brian, it says, when you set forth, uh, of, the request for, from a city resident with thirty city res- resident signatures, the color, the size, the higher, uh, the hiring of experienced artists, uh, an appropriate location, all of that that you set forth, was that not, even though it was its policy set yet, is that not what was followed by the first take you? And that's what you did?
Yes, yes.
For the first take you, you went through that whole process?
So out of the, out of the, out of the ten items that I listed, there were three that were not, but the other seven were. Uh, well, actually, request coming from a city resident, was a city resident, but we did not ask for a petition and we did not charge the furniture. So I would say that the other three items, request from the city resident, and the sign including wording, meaning colors, requested size has to be included in terms of an application, and the applicant needs to let us know who they are planning to do the painting, that it is done at the quality that we approved. Uh, I will work with them on an appropriate location. It's gonna have to be done at night to minimize traffic disruption, and, uh, type and quality of paint approved by the city. Applicant is responsible for the drying process, and the expectation is that the street is to be open by seven AM, no later than eight AM the next day.
Right.
And those were, that's consistent.
Right, that, so even though it's not totally written policy, yet the policy, the policy was called, that's basic.
It wasn't in writing, but that's what we did, so it's consistent.
Yes, that's, 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 yes.
And there was support for, by at least thirty people within the city for that. So the, so the policy tends to rule out of how the Black Lives Matter painting came about. And as far as the other two painting requests, we know where the line would go. Um, where was, I, I, where was the blue light, where the proposal to see Blue Lives Matter, and do we really need two things? Is it, is, Bill, do you feel like we need to just say yes to everybody because they proposed it?
No, not at all. I, I agree with you, Katie, I agree with you. If, I think one would be sufficient, okay? If there's a painting and there's one that's sufficient, and we can all go in council for Blue Lives Matter, the other proposal, that's fine, I don't think you need to, we had a Black Lives Matter, we can have a Blue Lives Matter, whatever they want. But I think we should just keep it standard and fill this policy, let's not make, put the policy in place and then have Blue Lives Matter be their painting, that's not fair. Let's vote like we do, let's go in free vote or we vote no. If we vote yes, we go forward, we have one painting, we decide on one painting. That's what I believe.
No, I think, I think you're right, since you don't have a policy in place, and they came forward before this, as long as they, as, as long as they're going, you want to start it, we make sure that it's used appropriately.
Yeah, right, right, appropriate things, but, but we put the same words, we did with Black Lives Matter. Let's not make sense, let's not change because it's something different, let's not change the rules for someone else. Just keep it consistent until we get a policy in place, which could be a month from now, but since Brian is bothering us, I think we gotta hit on this now, and not make a policy, have one painting, just decide on one, one, one group, and that's it, I think, I think it's, it's consistent, we talked about this before, Bruce, let's make things consistent.
I think, I think.
That is the most sensible position to take right now.
And so we would, I think, like with Black Lives Matter, we have to, the, the matter to work with our group, and also if those situations came into place, we would do the same thing. And that, that doesn't care how, how, how calm we're there, and, but I also just want to point out, going forward, that you can, there have been, uh, uh, some suggestions by, from, uh, very credible individual people, and it's that, that maybe also going forward, we can make an annual vat, um, and, and have a very, um, community oriented, um, saying or phrase or something, uh, every year, we could, we could do that in the middle of Main Street or BLM, or we can make that an annual kind of a vat, and we could, and, and involve the community, what do we say this year? I think that's an idea worth exploring, regardless of how we go around the other stuff, I, I don't want people to get the bad ideas from us, and I think it's a good idea, and it was, uh, it, it could really build some community spirit.
I understand. I understand very consistently, um, and I think it is important. I would point out, uh, that, um, you know, at the time in which we made the first request, uh, it was something that no one had requested before, it's my knowledge. Um, so I would just point out that maybe we also want to consider some form of consistency that until we formalize a policy moving forward, that, you know, maybe things get weightlessed or something, just so we don't see a, a ton of requests come in in between the time we, when we formalize. Just a thought, I don't know how many we'd be getting, but I, I do agree that consistency is important.
I mean, it's consistent, and I also think that we've had two requests, we stopped it, we're done everything else, and what we wanted to talk is they were, they were stopped, and there's nothing to do with the power, so I think we should do that.
I agree with that.
Me too. Yeah, I think with the general consensus, you guys are able to proceed, you know, until we have something officially in place that makes sense.
So for a proposal, then, I mean, a resolution from someone in terms of what will be allowed that is being permitted?
What can we talk first about? We, we've mentioned, at least Bill and I have, that I don't think we need to. So do you want to vote on whether or not we just, yes, or no, do you have ideas, or both of them, how do you want to handle that?
We've got a proposal for two, I think we gotta act on two. Or you can pull out on separately.
Definitely.
Yeah, I agree, stop it.
Alright, so, double checking my notes, uh, first proposal, I'll, uh, phrase the resolution, resolution to prove the painting of the blue line between the double yellow line on Green Book Street, and it would be from, looking at Matt. I have to say, from Fort Watson Street to Central Avenue.
Can you?
Tommy, if you get on Fort Watson, you go north, until you get to the corner with the, uh, county office building.
That's, that's a pretty long strike.
Well, I'm making half that. Make me a deal. What do you propose? Don't talk to the, have your hand down.
I, I, one, one, uh, I was just saying, which ones, which ones they are again, the stripe and back to blue, um, so they under, so everybody under, both of them, so I think he kind of forgot in the midst of talking. Um, I like back to blue myself, I mean, I think it stands out, that's just me, um, a stripe, you know, I don't know, I, like, like Tommy said, it might be too long, but, you know, I don't think you need the whole street, um, you know, the middle of the road, I think back to blue is, could be, uh, white, Black Lives Matter, so it's, it's, it's a spot, and that's it. Just make it long, just make it a spot, and that's what I believe.
I, I would agree with that, and the topic of some of the officers, uh, back to blue was, was a phrase that came up a couple of different times, so I would support that. And it does make more sense to have a phrase rather than a, you know, some line with a black line, and I'm not sure everybody was understanding, it misses itself, so I, I don't have, I mean, I, I'm okay with either one, I think back, back to blue makes more sense to me personally.
And if it gets, if it gets too close to the curb, why you think it's a handicap? You don't, you don't want it to get too close to the curb and make it handicap, you know?
I like the line, I think the line is new, I think the line would be seen as something of its own, um, and not in just a position to Black Lives Matter. And the man who came up with the idea for the line, said he had an idea quite a few years back, he just didn't bring it forward to somebody, and so, I, I feel like the, the idea for the line came first, and I think it's funny.
Um, but you could, Brian, if you tell us what the, what, where that blue line was gonna go against, I can try to picture that in my own mind.
Uh, the, the suggestion for the blue line was on Green Book Street, essentially outside of the Sheriff's Office from Fort Watson, uh, heading north, and I did not put in my notes where it would stop, so it's off, after work was sooner, but I suggested central, and it could be, sort of, it could be the, uh, uh, courthouse, that, or the edge of courthouse park.
I like to see it from the Sheriff's Department to the courthouse park. Okay, I, I can live with that. I like that that idea is, yeah.
So I'm hearing that there's a distinction between a line or back to blue?
Like I said, I think back to, back to blue, uh, stands a, a line, something where you put back to blue, what was back to blue gonna be, Brian?
There was that, kind of a distinction in terms of location.
Okay, so, I mean, Green Book Street, like, we had Main Street, the central location, we weren't able to see it, okay. I'm not saying, but Green Book Street is not valid, so I think that it should have it in the area where, make, you know, we could do Tompkins and Main, we could do, you know, Quikness and Main, you know, I mean, I think, you know, general facilities, back to blue, um, like I said, not everybody knows, I mean, everybody, I mean, the blue line is the blue line, but I think you have to make a statement, like, Black Lives Matter, in a general, central location. I just think it could be settled, uh, out of the way, it's not highlighted.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what they proposed, they put it.
That's it?
And that's, that's what they proposed, they wanted them to do the blue stripe.
No, 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 I'm saying back, I'm saying for back to blue, the stripe would have been on Green Book Street.
Right, yeah. So what's, sound the one on, uh, Green Book Street. Yeah, so then, the line to the Sheriff's Department and the, and the courthouse park. So Jackie, have her hand up, Jackie?
Hello. Um, I didn't want to put a pink in this fashion, but I believe the history of the blue line, blue line and the flag, started, uh, it was for fallen police and fallen officers, that, that was the beginning. And over time, it has been adopted by right groups, uh, supremacists, et cetera, and so there, for some groups of people, the symbolism of the blue line follows that well. Um, so, the other choice, to me, seems... the other choice, to me, seems less of a upfront, does that make sense? I, I forgot what the, the phrase was, but, but, support the blue, but, um, and everybody can fact check me on that, but I believe that is the history. And it's logical, see it now.
We want no, we want no mistake of what that means, you know what I'm saying? I, I agree with you, uh, on that. So let's, uh, let's consider it back to blue then.
Back to blue.
Thompson and Main? Big though? I'll take it to be on Thompson and Main. Big though? Maybe Groton and Main?
I think it would be appropriate for council to leave it for, need to be discussed with the applicant. That's what we did before.
Oh.
Gotta be consistent.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with you, yeah. Yep. And what, what court, maybe, yeah, also, Brian, it's, it's, what court, maybe what court street?
All right, resolution? I'm trying to work on wording. Resolution should approve the changing in an area to be determined by, uh, the mayor working with, uh, the applicant of the same back to blue, uh, consistent with stipulations that were put forward previously. And the stipulations, when I say put forward previously, are what we require to let, um, the city resident, uh, design must be submitted, and who is going back will do the same thing, the location, kind of day, type and quality of paint, how to dry, and reopening of the street.
Also, how big is this, what is it?
Well, that's why I say it's gotta be submitted, and then, uh, end of the day, the size, the size and the location were determined, you know, I've worked with the groups, but, or the individual in terms of, uh, last one, but ultimately, it was the mayor's decision.
I'm okay with that.
All right, do we have, do we even look into it first?
I don't know.
So, Captain, there's second Jackson Chapman, discussion, further discussion.
So we're talking about back to the, the world?
Back to blue. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose please? Bossy carries. Any further discussion?
Are we voting on the line? Because I think looking at what you've, um, what Jackie said, I'm, uh, born out there.
Good, thank you, Jackie.
Um.
Thanks for bringing that, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yep.
All right, so we'll hold off on this, at this point, for further discussion about the, uh, potential next, next one. Brett?
I, I think we should vote for it, I think, oh, that's a lot.
All right, so Katie, Katie, your suggestion is to put it forward and then put it up for a vote.
Do you think we, that, an option?
Well, vote on it, I need a resolution, right? Let's go to Rick.
Yeah, uh, since we're doing this back to blue, uh, maybe if Brian goes back to the, the blue stripe guy, he will, uh, support the back to blue initiative, and not his blue line initiative. So let, let's give Brian a chance to, to talk to him about that, so we're singularly kind of addressing this.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so, resolution or no? Now, this opportunity, if somebody wants to put it forward, it's not removed by.
Well, um.
Very good. Uh, update on the Cleveland Forward Committee. Somebody from council would like to talk to you on this, or would you like me to?
I'm okay with, with doing a math.
On paper, certainly. I just think you get bored of listening to me after a while. So, the discussion, there, there's been a, uh, opportunity, we think, to move forward with a June 15th event next year, there's some people who are on the committee that are interested, and the purpose will be improving and expanding on the education about what June 15th is, and why it's going to be a state holiday. Next year will be the first year that it's a state holiday in New York. Uh, so trying to help make sure everybody understands the meaning behind it, and why, uh, it's become a state holiday, it's gonna be a plus. Uh, we also have, and I'm not sure if she's on, April is on, but there was another suggestion.
Hi, I'm here.
Hey, hey, April, would you like to share a little bit of your idea for looking, uh, you could get something to do this summer?
Sure, so for, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
So for those who haven't met me yet, my name is April, and I am one of the leaders here in, uh, Cleveland, PLM chapter, and, um, have a couple of ideas that I'd like to run by you guys. So I'll put something out, I'm just gonna read it aloud. It's time to take the group to the next level. I'm thinking, community events. Keeping on issues in our society is very effective, however, I want to see more of what brings us together. Summer is not over yet, and one thing we can all agree on in upstate New York, we do not, under any circumstances, waste a nice summer day. Uh, one of the ideas I had was a, incidentally, a sidewalk coloring contest. Um, I would provide local businesses, such as property mania, bricks, or CSU with hoodie bags. These bags would contain a small healthy snack, a juice box, and some sidewalk props to distribute. Um, these bags would also contain a prompt word, such as equality or kindness. The kid would be encouraged to draw out what those words meant to them on the sidewalks or the driveways, uh, to, uh, make sure that we're maintaining local distancing, so winners are going to be chosen through social media. So I was thinking, each week, there would be a different word, and each week, there's gonna be a different prize. I was thinking things like, uh, gift, gift, super cream, or maybe sip red golf, or something along those lines. I think it would be a really good and fun educational way to get kids ready for the new school year after being out for so long. So, um, that's one idea that I had, uh, and I've been listening to your guys' meeting, uh, so far. Uh, I think it follows all of your guys' rules, so, um, one more community building activity I'm excited to ask for consideration of is actually a social, social distancing fair. I'm thinking some little fashion fair games would really help the community say goodbye to summer. So I'm thinking, there's so many classic games that would follow protocol by just adding a few little social distancing books. I'm thinking like water balloons, cornholes, uh, or my, my, my pride, I guess, uh, junkie mayor for a dollar junk tank. And maybe some proceeds go to a community botteer or something like that. Um, just make sure that all the proceeds being, uh, redistributed into the community. I haven't asked Tobin, but I'm hoping that you guys think this is a good idea, and getting up on it. So, basically, the idea they're just throwing in, and with the right support, I believe this could be successful. My vision is that this will boost morale in our local community, build awareness, and form bridges to long lasting relationships, because community matters. I'm still going to some other members of Portland over about moving Target Park as a location for this event. This location would be moderately used to control the flow of community members, and make sure that we're following all of the protocols. Um, thank you guys so much for your consideration, and I hope you like my idea.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I do like that idea. Thank you for coming forward, and also, I mean, I know it's gonna be a lot of work implementing it, and I know you have, I can keep on helping you, so, so thank you.
Definitely.
I think, I think the community, it's just a person, I have to come together and, and show, uh, you know, the kind of community that we can be.
Definitely, whatever. Um, so, at this event, with your guys' initiatives, and again, there's apparently ten things I need to do before I can do this, um, like ask, oh, this is gonna go back and forth, going with back to blue, and I was like, oh, oh boy. So, I was thinking, um, community matters. And maybe at this event, we should do the painting. Um, I know that it would probably not fit into the overnight time, but maybe it could be a painting in the park, or something. And I was listening to all the rules, there's a lot of rules.
Oh, here, here's the thing, are you talking painting or talk?
Uh, um, so for the, so the talk contest would be one separate event on social media. Um, that's especially geared for parents who are kind of nervous about bringing their kids out in public right now. I want something that would be always heated. Um, and then, in addition to that, a separate event at Target Park, where at the event, and to signify the event, um, painting community matters somewhere at the park. Like, what's the road? Well, there's, if you, from the Target Park, there's a sidewalk lane that kind of winds through the park, and writing community matters, maybe with like, you know, an apple for it, A, or, you know, something educational form, I don't, I don't have to get, I don't know what it would like to be, I don't know. Um, something, you know, friendly, and not just like two colors or something, something that the kids could get involved in, because, um, there's a lot of adult stuff going on right now. And it might, you know, it, it might be hard, hard for some kids in an area, so I think that, uh, something like that, and getting a youth in our area involved, um, would be great. Um, but, uh, looks like I need thirty signatures before I can come to do my show.
April, I'll work with you on it.
Yeah, awesome.
Will be, will be consistent.
Awesome, 'cause I, I just feel community matters kind of really encompasses everyone. Thank you. Definitely.
All right, so, uh, we did have a little bit of discussion, and in order for this to take place, we may need, or we will need some participation from community members. In the form of donations, so be aware to the community council that, at some point, we want to talk about how to fund this, and how to make it a fun event for kids throughout our community, and hopefully kids of all ages. But, April, thank you for the idea, and looking forward to discussing it further. And I think we'll have a good draft, or more than just a rough draft of council, uh, the 18th, which is our next meeting.
Perfect, yep, I should have something, um, typed up, printed out, and distributed to everybody.
Excellent.
By that time, I should know, uh, um, specifics about businesses that might want to help, um, as well as helping distribute the hoodie bags for the talk contest.
And, uh, April, I, um, you don't have to answer this now, I'm not trying to play you on spy. We, we talked about so many different ideas. At one point, we also talked about maybe some activities that would be educational for students. You don't necessarily know what is equity matters, equality, and things like that. I don't know if that's something you're still considering or not, and you don't have to ask that really now, I just wanted to throw that out there in case that's something you still want to move on or not move on, that's all.
Um, no, definitely, in fact, at the Cleveland Forward meeting yesterday, um, we talked a lot about how all of these could be a little more educational, especially because it would help kids get in the swing of things, or school again. So definitely, definitely, there's been, um, a lot of suggestions thrown around, uh, so like, inequality relay race, um, where, uh, people would be encouraged to start at one line, and, um, then you're asked questions such as, um, did you grow up in Portland? Or, uh, if you're in a specific grade, um, if people say yes to questions, they can take a step forward. Um, once the questions are over, then the race starts. And that's supposed to teach kids about, um, equality, these different walks of life. So that's just one example of how we can make, um, something as simple as that, like a fair game relay race, educational.
There you go. April, thank you for sharing, and thank you for the time and effort on that.
Definitely, it's been very interesting sitting in, um, your guys' meetings this evening. Thank you so much, I appreciate the, uh, opportunity.
Outstanding. Take care.
All right, yep, have a great evening, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, bye-bye.
And good news, we do have one more agenda item, and just information on COVID-19, and, uh, city's response. As I stated earlier, the rate for, the community, although we are getting complaints, and in particular, if there's observations, and it doesn't matter if it's a business or other activities, where people may not be, uh, social distancing, so we are responding. And it is, I believe, having a strong impact, and as we've listened to the rain, so to speak, uh, after July 4th, there was a small increase here, and it's thought more so in some other places. But the more that we're able to manage it, the more that we're able to pay attention to risk factors, i.e. large groups, and limiting the potential for large groups, then the safer we're going to keep the community safe, everybody. Uh, we are continuing discussions within city halls, and the different city departments, and becoming more formalized with our precautions, not just physical barriers and steps, but also self steps. Every employee, what are we doing, so those conversations are ongoing, and we are continuing to talk about how do we make sure we're protecting the public, and protecting all of our employees to the best of our abilities. Uh, any questions about that? No further agenda items, but once again, similar to last meeting, allow the opportunity for public comments to start, and like to allow public comments opportunity at the end. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment, please put your name in the chat, and if you did not hear me earlier, if you're not seeing anything in the group chat, it's coming just to me, the organizers. Uh, you're interested, keep it in the conversation, focus on the conversation. And first up, Christina Fury, Christina, hello.
Hello, I, I think I just unmuted myself.
Can hear you.
Good evening, council, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you. Um, I have a couple of concerns. I appreciate Mayor Tobin's willingness to talk about, um, conversations that are happening, but with the rest of y'all, minus Kat McCarthy, um, I'm really pretty disappointed in all of you. You talk a really great game about conversations that you want to have, but y'all have at least two emails sitting in your inbox, reaching out from Melissa Kaiser, and I did talk about things like, meeting on the streets, and how your constituents feel. Daryl, you're my older person, you have those two indications, and I have yet to hear one thing from you. So Brian, there is some sort of disconnect when it comes to what your council is doing. Also, Mr. Michaels, I would like to talk to you for a moment. You said, and I quote, "Certain people have no right to be in our community if they can't say something nice about our law enforcement." Sir, as a woman, I am not here to be nice. I am never in this world being nice, no, neither than anybody else. I do not owe that to you, and I do not owe niceness to our law enforcement. What I do owe is accountability, because y'all work for us. You are elected officials, and we are your constituents, we are the residents of your city. I wonder, could you please clarify, for your constituents, and my colleague and very good friend, Melissa Kaiser, what you meant by certain people? Because there is a very good chance that that certain person was black, sir, and your comments are not welcome in this community. So I would wonder whose place, who has a place in the community? Because right now, that comment is incredibly incendiary.
Well, I'm sorry, you said it the same way.
And also...
I have a lot of black friends, and, uh, the cabinet was for a street force, which a lot of individuals, uh, grew up, uh, with my son, uh, when he was over age. So I don't know a lot of these young, young officers. And, uh, they probably, they put their forehand into the jar and, uh, see them disgrace the way they have been by individuals like yourself. Kind of, uh, just feeling wrong, uh, mindset.
I was not finished talking.
Well, I know they're listening to you, so I'll say it.
Mr. Michaels, that is not appropriate. And Brian, I hope you talk to Mr. Michaels about how these treat his constituents, because that's not on you to do, that's on you to do. You might want to ring that one in. Second, and lastly, I just want to say, the only other thing that I really have an issue with is, um, when it comes to the discussion about violating the penal law based on masking and not masking, I would just say that I think discussions need to be had around this, around the discussions of black individuals in our community. Because while one person said that the judge was making decisions between, a person could go to court but end up with no fine, but you could also end up with jail time, there's a very good opposite, there's a very good chance that our white individuals would end up with no fine, and statistically, our black individuals would end up in jail. Please make sure that that is taken into consideration. Um, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Christina.
This is Jeff Smith, president. Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Jeff, what I want to talk about is what I talked to you and Gary about, is the event that me and Gary are hosting this very, it's, it's the first ever black business owners and black leaders appreciation event. It's for to celebrate and, uh, have the city recognize how many black business owners are in the community, and how many black, how many black leaders are in the community. And what we can do to expand that to make more people want to become black business owners, want to become more black leaders in the community. And that way the community can see who is the leaders in the community, who is the black business leader, and come out and please, you know, and meet everybody, meet and greet, obviously. Everybody come and watch this, this is for the CDC guidelines going on. You know, that's why we're having the event going on for four hours, from one to four. So everyone can come out, who have never been there. Gary, so basically, open the spot off, gonna be selling movies and all, it's gonna be open all day long. And figure, it's nice to have a community together as well, too.
Very good. So Saturday, from one to four, I have two questions. Katie still in there? Especially if you don't respond to this.
Sorry, I know.
Go ahead, I'm sure it's a question about the event.
Yeah, it's, um, okay, it says, is this in the beach, the beach mall?
South Mall.
It's south mall?
Yes, it is. It's gonna be there. And I've spoken with Mayor Tobin and Gary about it all, and how many people have been there three times, for the CDC guidelines and everything else, which is a reminder and that, so it's not always probably making sure that's involved, making sure the mask is being enforced. So we're not filing any, so it's not going to hurt at all as well.
Okay, thank you.
You are very welcome. Well, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to share this with you guys, and hopefully you guys can make it out to the line.
Jeff, Jeff, is anybody, uh, working on reservations or making arrangements or such to make sure that, or just because it's a three-hour event, giving people the opportunity to come and go at different times?
Uh, nobody has made reservations with us yet. It's basically open to public, you know, obviously, there's, um, limits for people that are in there. We'll tell people, uh, or we need people to come in, come in and go out, so that way people can come in. And that way we can still follow the guidelines as, so the governor's orders, so, so, and not violating household or whatever.
Very good. All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Further, further discussion from council, anything else, any business for council to attend to this evening? Katie, so...
Uh, I just want to say regarding Christina Fury's, uh, comment, if you haven't gotten her email, um, seen my P and R Barracuda file, I noticed. I think that's where I found the invitation and incidentally, I did respond and haven't heard that, so...
Thank you, Kate. See, I just spent the last several minutes looking through my emails, but I don't, I don't remember getting that email. I never got it. Now I know why. It's in the, it's in the spam folder, but they don't check that regularly anymore, so now, okay. All right, thank you.
That's just amazing where there's, there's...
Thanks.
I'll look for it. Very good. Hearing you all through this business, I'll let it continue. Looking to adjourn. Kat McCarthy, second. Jackie Chapman, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, both? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time this evening, and your patience.
You go ahead.
Thank you.